Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is June 22, 2021. This is our electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. It's a virtual meeting. Madam Chair, and Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Council Chair, please state the sitting and state in which you're currently residing. Dave Abdallah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdallah.
Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Mo Baydun.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here, in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have agenda approval. Tonight, we have two changes. A comptroller has asked us to remove item 9I. And we also need to add an emergency postal claim number 48 would be under fund transfers and current claims. The reason for this emergency postage claim is we want to make sure we have enough postage in our Pitney Bowes machine. We're running low. And we are going to increase it by $8,000, and this is due to difficulty in getting postage. Our council members, we do need to vote to have that come on the agenda because, as you know, I normally don't do this, but we want to make sure our absentee ballots go out and we have enough postage. And our next meeting is not until the second Tuesday in July, which would put us, we would have some issues.
Madam Chair, before you make that motion, in regards to them, the one from Comptroller Jawad, did you want to take that off of, there's two different ones. I know there was a duplicate, I guess, on current claims or the reports from city officials?
We've got Mr. Jawad in the waiting room. If somebody could let him in, we could ask him.
There we go. I just did. This way, we have our records.
Yeah.
What he wants.
Yeah, we might want to ask him because it is on there twice. I did notice that.
So we either have 9I or current claim 9.
He's still not coming in.
Yeah, it says he's joining. It might be a bad connection.
Okay.
9 is Comerica Bank.
Well, before we do that, let's vote on the postage. Because we do need a majority vote to add that on.
We need a motion first, correct?
Right, correct. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that City Council add posted stamps of $8,000 in current claim 6-648.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. That is now added to the agenda. Okay, now we've got comptroller.
He's there.
We can unmute him and ask him the question now.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Shouldn't we also have agenda approval? Because this was added on, but we haven't done full agenda approval with this addition. So we should have agenda approval.
We're trying to get a clarification on this, and then we will do the agenda approval, adding both of these on because item 9I is a duplicate also under fund transfers and current claims. So we're trying to figure out which one is the correct.
Comptroller Zion.
I'm here. I'm sorry.
Oh, there he is. He's there.
There he is. Okay, go ahead.
I didn't, I didn't hear. What are we approving? I just signed on. I'm sorry.
Okay, comptroller, I was wondering if you wanted to remove 9I or current claim 9?
The current claim because I, I, I 9 already covers it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So the next motion would be the removal of current claim 69.
Thank you very much.
69?
69, yeah. Which is to Comerica Bank, which is the Act 345 contribution, which is also presented in 9I.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Move the agenda for the Order of Business for the June 22, 2021 electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council be approved with the deletion of current claim number 69.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we needed a motion for agenda approval, adding current claim 6-48 and removing current claim 6-9. Who would like to do that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve the agenda with the addition of 648 and the removal of 69.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have a closed session. This is with Chief of Staff Hernandez, Corporation Council Miyaki, and Suzanne Bartos with Cummings, McClory, Davis, and ECHO. This is a lawsuit of Constance versus City of Dearborn Heights.
I move, Councilor Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that City Council go into closed session.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdo Hawk. At this time, all council members will go into closed study session except Councilman Coniston and me.
Madam Chair, can we have a roll call vote for that?
Okay. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yes.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Council Chair Malinowski Maxwell. Yes. Yep, go ahead. We'll entertain the crowd while you're gone.
Do we want to keep recording?
I'm going to pause it after you leave. Or are you done?
Yeah, we're all set.
Everybody's in there. Okay, recording. Go ahead now.
And then we have to return to an open session. I'm sorry.
First, I want to make a motion to return to open session.
Support. More.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. I move that City Council concur with Corporation Council Suzanne Bartos in the settlement agreement as we discussed in closed session.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? We've got to do a roll call vote now at this time. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
Abstain, Council Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Abdallah?
No.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell, abstain. Motion passes.
Bits. This is the Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for Richard A. Young Center Fitness Room Floor. I'm sorry. We have fund transfers in current claims.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claim six one through six forty eight as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any questions in regards to this?
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Just a quick question for our Clerk Lynn Senior. Would we still say as submitted or as submitted and amended? Cause we did amend it.
You can do that even though you amended the agenda just to make it clear and concise. You can do that, Councilman.
So as submitted and amended then, I'd like to change my revise it. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Is there any questions in regards to this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, I'm sorry, Mr. Jamal. This is for council people to vote on and discuss. If it is specific to your department, we would call on you if there was a question regards to one of the items for your department. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for the Richard A. Young Center Fitness Room Floor.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move Dearborn Heights City Council Award to bid for Richard A. Young's Center Fitness Room Floor to strength TG toe?
Strength deal.
Strength deal fitness and the amount of, thank you, in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty cents. As they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in the twenty twenty-one Richard A. Young budget. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to unsuccessful bidders as outlined in seven A. And that was twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Richard A. Young budget. Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Bit Award for the Richard A. Young Center Gymnasium Floor.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Richard A. Young Center Gymnasium Floor to Allcore Inc. In the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Richard A. Young Capital Outlay Budget. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders as outlined in seven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant Request for Bids at the Eaton Senior Center. Recreation Center's Outdoor Canopy.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for the removal, oh, excuse me. Am I Eaton Center? Oh, the lead based canopy from the Eaton Center Recreation Center and paint with new non-lead based paint. Funds have been allocated through CDBG, I guess.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
As outlined in seven C. Support.
That is correct.
Okay, I just want, okay, support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Councilman Abdul Hawk? I just have a request for Director Constant. Please try to use the CDBG money which is available before anything else.
I am. We had a meeting on that today.
I know. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion, Councilman Abdullah?
So this typically I would ask our DPW Director, but at this particular point, we're in the process of interviewing. So I'm gonna speak with the Mayor and the Mayor's Administration on this. Being in the real estate business, I know lead based paint is a major, major, major concern for a lot of families. And of course elderly and seniors. And, and I was really, really scared when I seen some of these pictures. So if there's any way, Mr. Mayor, you could put somebody from DPW or whatever to go around a lot of our buildings. And start hitting these, e- even if it's all on the next agenda and get these all painted. And because it, it is so unsafe as far as kids putting them in their mouth, they'll have brain damage, God forbid, you know, seniors, et cetera, et cetera. If you could have somebody go around the buildings that we have, and I don't know if there's any other buildings that we have the same problem in. But this is, it sounds like something simple because it's paint, but it is really, really major to make sure that we take care of this in our other buildings, if you don't mind.
We'll look into that Council Chair for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Uh, thank you so much. And this is to Director Kim Constant. Uh, thank you. Same thing. It's kind of what the Councilman Abdullah said about the lead paint. But I know that regarding the Eaton Center, I believe we went out for bids on the restroom. Did we get any, uh? Did we get anything back on that? I'm just curious.
Okay, we're getting off of the path here. This is only to discuss what is on the, before us. We have a motion.
I, I, yeah, I mean, and I know we're discussing the Eaton Center. I just wanted to know where that was, Madam Chair. So if you don't mind me just allowing me to ask.
In the future, you would need to do that during public comment to question her. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, we did get the bids back um, at the end of last week and I just got them today in my inter-office mail. Um, if you were talking about a little, i- if there was any lead in it, there's very minute amount of lead in the bathrooms. Not enough to harm anybody, but we're taking care of that as well, too.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion before we vote on this? Okay. Mr. Hassem Jamal, go ahead, please.
Just, just making sure everybody understand the, the rules for the lead. Since the senior centers are designated not to be used by kids, especially bedrooms under six. So the senior center are exempt from any lead mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? This is seven C. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under Reports from Mayor, we have Ogletree, Deacons, Nash, Smoke. And Stewart P L L C Engagement of Legal Services for Labor Negotiations and General Employment. And Labor Personal Matters.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move Dearborn Heights, the city, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the engagement letter with Ogletree, Deacons, Nash, Smoke. And Stewart P L L C for labor negotiations and general employment and labor personnel matters. And authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in eight A. Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? Councilman Abdullah?
Council Chair, I'd like to speak with the administration, specifically maybe the mayor on this.
Hold on, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so why are we, I mean, I don't remember the name of the last firm, but why are we changing firms? And why this particular firm? Was there a problem with the last firm? Is this firm that much better? And are we looking at all different possibilities because of the amount of pay that we'll be paying? I know their contract, they had mentioned four hundred and twenty dollars per hour is their normal pay. They didn't say that they would adjust it for us to two hundred and seventy-five dollars. But as you know, and I know, and all of us know, labor negotiations are very, very important to the city and of course to the employees. With that being the case, why this firm? Why now? Why changing firms? Thank you.
Mayor, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. So we actually got, got the, the particular attorney's name by, uh. It was a highly recommended for negotiation, especially with contracts. We had an interview with the attorney with our, our attorney, Mr. Miyaki. And also our HR Director. And that's how we chose this attorney. And I know Mr. Miyaki, he had, uh, I guess in-depth conversation with, with this attorney. And you know, as I mentioned before, you, we want something positive, you know, to the city. So we wanted to make sure, you know, somebody's looking. Uh, the best interest of both, you know, our employees and the city. So this person was highly recommended, very positive, very energetic. And that's why we chose that person. Again, you know, he was interviewed and highly recommended. I know Mr. Miyaki, I don't know if you want to chime in and.
But at, at the same time, in addition to that, I'm sorry if you don't mind, Counselor. Are we under any obligation to put something this out for RFPs?
No. And again, this would be a matter of the fee has to end up being approved. Uh, and the fee agreement has to end up being approved by the council because by charter. The fee is scheduled is determined by this honorable body. Uh, I would end up making the appointment. And the mayor would approve the appointment if you approve this, uh, this fee agreement. And if I may comment further, Council Chair, with respect to this.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as the mayor stated, we had an opportunity to interview Mr. Makula. Who would be the assigned individual. Uh, he has very impressive credentials. Uh, he was involved. Both from a, a union standpoint earlier in his career. And now he generally is on the employer's side. I think he has a very good manner in terms of handling these types of issues. Uh, certainly, he's, he's expensive, but he's highly recommended. And he seems to be very well. Uh, very knowledgeable in this area. Uh, and I think he could do a, a really good job for us in this area as well. And, um, his firm and he have shown a willingness to work with us in terms of the rate. Um, so if you approve this, then I will end up sending a letter, uh, appointing him. The mayor will approve that and he'll be right on and ready to go in terms of negotiating for us.
How does the two hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour compare to our last, uh, firm that we had?
Uh, significantly higher, uh, the firm we had before.
Define, define significantly. I mean, are we talking about?
They were being paid the same thing that I am paid, uh, namely a hundred and forty dollars per hour, the standard corporation accounts. So Assistant Corporation Council rate. Um, I don't necessarily want to spend too much time discussing. Uh, some of these things. My personal feeling is, is that, uh, we will have better service. Uh, given to us with respect, uh, to, um, this firm. Than we have in the past and probably more consistent. And frankly, I think less of a likelihood of there being any sort of. Contention. I mean, it's going to be hard enough because of negotiations, but, um, he has a really good manner. I think he'll be really good in terms of, uh, dealing with things in terms of negotiations. So.
And I do, and I do respect that he's better. The, the concern that I have, as with any type of job or entity or anything that you buy. When, in this particular case, at a, and I quote him from his contract, I read his contract discounted rate. And again, I don't know, he may be great. I don't know. I'm asking. But even with the discounted rate, he's doubled the price or almost doubled the price of the previous one. I, I just, I'm trying to find out what is our advantage other than he's great? Are we going to save a lot of money? Are we going to get better terms? What, what is our advantage to pay double? I, I'm having a hard time digesting that.
I don't know that you can necessarily quantify that, uh, Councilman. Um, however, I can say that. For example, when I originally was an Assistant Corporation Council, back when I worked for Corporation Council data. There was a firm called Strangari Fritz and Krieger that handled labor, um, matters. And their rate was significantly higher than normal Corporation Council rate, uh, because they were considered highly specialized in labor and employment. Uh, labor negotiations. So there is some precedent for this. I do recognize that it's a higher rate. Certainly, that is a call for the council to make. Uh, but I agree with the mayor with respect to his assessment of this, uh, this gentleman. And, uh, you know, I, I would recommend that you, uh, approve this. Thank you.
Hey Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I also want to mention, so I have discussed this with a few union members of what happened in the past. Obviously, they were not happy with, a- again, you know, we're not talking about anybody in particular, but what happened in the past. So that's why we wanted to bring somebody positive and somebody that can actually, I mean, you, you can get somebody with less than half the price. But if you go back and forth, back and forth with this, you know, these contracts, you know, it's going to end up costing us more. And again, you want to bring, you know, something positive, you know, to the table, somebody who is willing to work, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned. You know, he's worked with the union in the past on the other side of the spectrum. So now, you know, I mean, he knows what's, what's going on. He, he wants to make sure that, uh, you know, good positive negotiations will take place.
Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah. You got more?
So I'm going to ask another perspective than, uh, Counselor Gary Miyaki. And, and I'm not sure if you kind of can't answer this one, but, and I don't know. What is normal pay for union negotiations or labor negotiations? When I say normal, what is the average? What is, I, I want to get a perspective because based on the last one, it sounds like it's just way too high. Including the discount, it's still way too high. So what is somewhat normal pay for this type of position?
It, it very much unfortunately varies. I can't give you a normal because a lot of it is driven by the nature of the employer. Uh, obviously municipal rates are typically lower than private sector rates. Uh, so for example, my typical rate in my private practice is like twice as much as the rate that I charge the city. Okay, so it, this is kind of what we're dealing with here is that the rates are lower. For municipalities generally. And his rate, like you said, is over four hundred dollars per hour. And that is not unheard of for the type of work that they do. We're talking about getting like the top-notch type of person. In this particular area, highly specialized. He wouldn't be an average person in terms of doing this type of work. So to say, well, what are the average rates? It's kind of like, well, what are the average rates for someone of this high quality, this caliber? Probably four hundred dollars per hour and he's giving us a bit of a discount. You know, Councilman, again, uh, you know, you, uh, the, the dishonorable body controls the purse. Uh, certainly if, uh, if, if there's a concern, you know, I can understand that. On the other hand. Uh, the caliber of, of, of this individual is, you know, it's, i- i- he's top match.
I'd be okay with it with just a better rate. That's my biggest problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdul Hawk?
Thank you. I was waiting for David to finish. I want just to look at the branches of this law firm, how many branches they have around the world. Nineteen ninety-two, I hired lawyer to negotiate something for me. I paid four hundred dollars an hour. Nineteen ninety-two. So the two seventy-five, I think it's a good deal for the city. If they do what we ask them for. The hundred and forty dollars we paid before for those lawyers. I believe was just for show. They were present just for show that we have lawyers. Because the city council asked to have lawyers negotiate our contract. But we all know who really negotiated everything. I want first to ask, who sets the parameters? Which was in it, this firm negotiate all the contract. In which contract they go into negotiate? Mr. Miyaki, if you can answer it.
Sure, I, essentially you as body would give direction and the mayor would give direction. Of course, these things would be done in a closed session. Um, but that's where the direction would end up, uh, being given. In terms of negotiating strategy for the city.
I am going to ask our mayor. I know it is in his hand to negotiate everything. The city council can vote on it. And our vote as the charter right now written doesn't mean anything, even if we vote seven to zero, they can go to arbitration. And the mayor can still, you know, agree to everything. I am asking for the sake of transparency, Mr. Mayor. To involve the city council because we all one team, we all one city. And I need to be fair to all the employees. I don't want one branch of the city to get everything. And other branch don't get anything. We have to be fair and I hope you, you be the first one to do this. For transparency and for cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I had a comment, not, not a question, so I'm going to hold it to the end. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Wenzel?
Yes, thank you. Um, I wouldn't be doing my job as a councilman representing the residents of Dearborn Heights. If I didn't urge the mayor to have this new law firm stress return to the five-day work week. And not take no from, an answer from the unions. Uh, this is something that every other city has. And we've been talking about it for years. This is our opportunity now to, to put our money where our mouth is on this issue for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Constant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I read the proposed contract and so forth. And I understand this new, uh, law firm comes and the individual attorney highly recommended. But, um, I too was concerned about the, the rate. I know our prior lawyers that did. Our labor negotiations are, I do labor negotiations for a lot of cities in the area. And, um, I think something like this should eventually go out for bid. Uh, to make sure we're getting a, uh, fair and reasonable price. Uh, and, and we want to look at some of the, uh, local firms that have dealt with the local unions in the past. Thank you, city unions.
Um, I just got a question. Did we have problem with the previous firm that we didn't go with them again? Did they do something wrong?
Yeah.
Councilman Muscat, this is directed towards corporate counsel.
Well, then, you know what?
Okay, may, may I speak?
Sure. So I just, I just want the public to know, so we're being transparent.
My, my sense is, is that the mayor had a specific idea in mind with respect to what he was looking for. In terms of a more positive direction. And I think that was the impetus for it. I don't want to speak for the mayor with respect to that. But I think that there were some issues in the past. Um, I think the council may be aware of, uh. A number of these issues. And it was felt that a more positive, kind of polished. Perhaps more focused approach would be helpful if that, if, I, I, I think I've kind of answered the question. By saying that.
Also, do we have any idea of the total estimated cost this is going to cost us taxpayers?
No, unfortunately, we don't have a notion of exactly how negotiations will go. Uh, sometimes they go quickly, uh, sometimes they don't. Depends in part on what the city's position will be. And what the union's position will be. And that's where sometimes the quality of the negotiator is more helpful. Because then you can cut through and, and get the things quicker and thereby save some expense. But unfortunately, we do not have any sort of, uh, crystal ball or guarantee in this situation.
Now, this firm is subcontracted under you per our charter. Is that correct?
I think subcontracting would be the inappropriate term. I don't get paid by, I don't get anything that they get paid. So I'm not really, they're not really subcontracted. They're appointed by me, subject to the mayor's approval.
Okay.
Subject to the rates that, uh, you as a council body set.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because it wasn't presented by you. So I just want to make sure that this is under, you know, your.
Right. If, if you approve, I will send a, uh, an email or communication to the mayor. Just like I did earlier when your body ended up approving kind of everything. And then, um, he will send the communication back saying good. And then Mr. Makula will be ready for the negotiating session. On July the first, if I recall correctly, right, Mayor, if I recall correctly. Uh, so, uh, hopefully, hopefully that will be the case.
Okay, next I have Councilman Muscat. Go ahead, please.
You know, we had a lot of problems. And I, I, I put a resolution in years ago, way before you were a councilperson. That we wanted a professional negotiator to come in and negotiate our contracts. We finally got someone and we're hemming and hawing about price. And, and, and with all due respect to Mr. Abdullah. Uh, e- even in your business, you get what you pay for, okay? We, 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 we always go cheap. We get cheap, uh, cheap results. Let's get this done. And let's go forward with it. Uh, Corporation Council Miyaki is, can say it, it was much more articulate than I am. Because I, I, I need to be quiet before I say something that I'm going to regret. Thank you.
Councilman Abdul Hawk?
My man Ray. The question to Gary. Can we as city council put forward resolutions, asking this company and the mayor? What to negotiate for?
I would recommend that you do so in a closed session. I think it would be very, very disadvantageous. To end up saying something in a public setting. And then you're revealing your bargaining and negotiating position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Councilman Baydun.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. And, uh, my question is, maybe corporate counsel can answer this for us. On average, um, how I would, you know, I know, I know it's an additional hundred and thirty dollars an hour. Are they working forty hours? Are they going to be, uh, working, you know, forty hours a week? Are they working ten hours a week? Can, can we get a breakdown of a number on that?
I'm afraid, again, I, I would not be able to give a good estimate. Perhaps, uh, the HR Director. Uh, Elizabeth Sabota Perry would have a notion of how much they, how often.
I mean, can we look at the past and see what they, you know, what they usually, how many hours they work? Cause I just did some simple math, a hundred and thirty dollars. Based on forty hours, that's fifty-two hundred, assuming that they do twelve weeks, ten weeks of that, that's fifty-two thousand dollars. I'm, I'm just trying to break down just some simple math to get a better understanding.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just saying in terms of the hours and how many sessions they normally go through, she would have a better notion. I, I have rarely been involved in collective bargaining, uh, for the city only on occasion. And, uh, so I would not have a good basis for an estimate. I'm sorry, Councilman.
Thank you. Okay, maybe our HR Director may have some of that.
Good evening. So I will tell you that we have four open contracts that would include the carpenters' union, the dispatchers, the COAM. Which is the Police Supervisors Union and then the TPOAM, which is the Labor and Clerical Union. So, um, two of those contracts, um, have been extended and we've been working on that. Of course, that was with the previous administration, so we need to continue those negotiations with this administration. And then the other two, um, those contracts expire on July, or sorry, June thirtieth. So, um, it depends on what our schedule is for meeting. Um, now that we have the, our, once we get the attorney in place, we have our team in place. We have the budget set. Um, we have a set of priorities. We already know what certain priorities there are of the union. And so we will be meeting on a fairly regular schedule. Um, and our meetings are probably going to last. You know, two to three hours, once a week with each of those unions. Um, there will be some additional work that we will have to do on our end. Of course, the attorney will have to do on their end. Um, you know, so, you know, I, it's unlikely, I would guess, you know, forty hours a week for twelve weeks. Seems pretty aggressive. Um, I, I can't see that happening, um, even with all four contracts. Because we're, we're not rewriting every piece of it. Um, and then of course, at the end, you know, we're going to check. And, you know, the, we're going to utilize our attorney to, of course, present in the closed study session. Um, and do whatever needs to do to get these contracts through, so.
So I think, uh, I think it's safe to say that there's not going to be forty hours. And if it's two to four hours, you know, weeks for, say, I don't know. Ten weeks. It doesn't make that big of a difference. I think we should be okay. Two to four hours, I don't think it's going to, you know, milk the cities. Well, I think it's safe to say that.
Right.
Are you basing that on a hundred and forty dollars an hour or two hundred and seventy-five?
An additional hundred and thirty dollars, because if you're subtracting the two seventy from the one forty, that's where you come up with your math.
Right, that's what I was wondering, because I did the two seventy-five times forty and it's eleven thousand a week. If it's a week.
Uh, again, I, I, you know what, I, I don't see, I mean, I see it's a little bit extra money, but I think it's safe to say you're spending good, you get good. Again, I, I, you know what, I, I don't see, I mean, I see it's a little bit extra money, but I think it's safe to say you spend good, you get good. Um, so I, I, I'm gonna stick on that one as well. And then I see Councilman Muscat's ready to go.
Hey, is there any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes. Pardon?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Conston?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Melanowski Maxwell? No. It does pass. Next item on the agenda is extension of agreements. Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors and Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association, TPOAM.
Council Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Uh, I recommend uh, that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the extension of the agreements between the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors and the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association, TPOAM, on a day-to-day basis until new agreement is reached and approved, is outlined in item eight B. Wait, hold on. I, I need to amend, because I started with, I recommend, I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights, dot, dot, dot. Thank you.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdallah?
I would like uh, Mrs. Sabatka, if she can explain about the interest rate which is used in this agreement. I'm not sure if I am.
Okay. And who is that directed at?
I'm, I'm sorry. Let, let me back up. I just need copy of those agreements. I would like the city council to have copies of them so we all can see what's in them, and this give us chance to recommend to the administration if there is anything affect uh, you know, the city financially that we can at least have little say in it.
I can do that if that's.
Go ahead.
Mr. Abdallah, um, so he wants copies of the current collective bargaining agreements for the two contracts that are up.
Did they submit the new ones, or do you only have the old ones?
No, so at this point, so we wouldn't submit that until we actually have a TA, that's what the council, so you would, you would receive the um, old ones, the existing ones, and I can forward the other two that are expired and that we've extended, so I'll, I'll forward all that to you, so you'll have it for tomorrow morning. And then um, with regards to the PBGC rate, um, it just, you know, it, it's goofy in the packet, and it follows this, this motion, or it follows this information, but it's really part of a different agenda item.
I, I know, I'm sorry. That's why I backed on my question. Okay, I would like you to give everybody, not just me, copy of those.
Yeah, so it, it's gonna be a few emails because they're very large files.
That's fine. Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, I had a question uh, for either the mayor or for our uh, HR Director Elizabeth Sabota Perry. Actually, let me, let me ask it to our HR Director. In the agreement with the unions that you sent out on the second page in, in the memorandum of agreement, um, consistently, all it talks about is the interest rate, but then yet, in the motion from the mayor, it talks about making this thing, this contract changed to a dated basis.
So there are two, so there are two different things. I don't know why they're connected in the, in your packet. So the mayor's letter is for two contracts, okay? And that's for the TPOAM or the DHPEA contract to extend that contract that's expiring June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, and also to extend the Police Supervisors Union. Then there's three memos of agreement, and that affects the firefighters and the two police unions. That's a completely separate issue, and that is, I know.
But I'm sorry. I apologize, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, and it looks like the clerk wants to talk probably on that.
But the problem with that, when we make the motion, we're gonna be making a motion on eight B, but it's totally different from what's in the packet, which is a memorandum of agreement that we have in there.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank HR Directors Sabota Perry for trying to explain that to us because we were confused too, but that's how it was presented to the clerk's office for the agenda. So that's what we included in the agenda. So thank you for the explanation. I don't know if I understand it, but thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
So I'm still not clear, because it's still two completely different agreements. So to me, I would think logically, if they're completely different things, then we should be voting on them separately and making motions on them separately. Then eight B, so it should be, and then at that particular point, that complicates matters more, but now the agenda would have to be changed, because we're pulling on additional items.
So this, so the backup that you're looking at with the three memos of under standings is related to nine M. Where it says, Human Resource Director Agreement with Unions Regarding PBGC Rate.
This confused me too, because.
Well, maybe we should refer this back to administration, have it brought back with, done properly.
But the contract expires before then.
Well, Madam Chair?
So they're both on the agenda. So they're both on the agenda. So it's the backup that doesn't seem to match. So your, what's your backup look like for nine M is what, it looks like an additional copy, what's attached to the mayor's motion.
These gears.
I, I.
See, Madam Chair, what I would suggest we do, we could continue with the contracts. You're talking about the contract expiring. I get that. Continue with the contract on a day-to-day basis, but only until the next council meeting where we are voting, that that particular point, the proper paperwork with the proper backup can be together, so we could vote on this thing, vote on this thing properly, and, and nothing be missing. That's what I would suggest.
So can, can I just add one thing? There, there is no backup to the contract. The contract, the letter from the mayor is just an simple and extension of the existing contracts that you have for the Police Supervisors Union and the TPOAM or DHPEA Union. That's the only backup. It appears in your packet under that agenda item. There's the additional piece that should not be attached. That's the nine M stuff. That's the backup to nine M.
What about the le, the letter from you then also should be for an item? Is that correct? I know you can't read.
Yes, there's a memo from nine M, and those are the three pieces that go to, I'm trying to scroll through my agenda packet.
There's actually four different pages.
So it's my memo and three memos of understanding, or members, memos of agreement.
Right, plus an email or letter. I'm not sure if, who, what it is, but to the mayor from you.
Correct, that's, that's the.
That goes with the memorandum of agreement?
That, that goes with nine M, correct. The three memos of.
Madam Chair?
The memos of understanding are in twice, it appears, in the council agenda.
They are repetitive twice.
They are repeated twice. So for whatever reason, they're attached to the mayor's i, item, and they're also in nine M, which they should be.
Oh, okay, I see it. Okay.
Well, but then your email's not in nine M.
No, my, my email is.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, it is.
No, it is.
Okay.
It is, yep.
Okay, so for eight B, we're gonna look at just the first page and the only page, the eight B, nothing.
Wait, you just rip the back pages off and throw it away?
They're two different, they're two different things, right? Because that's, that's the ma, that's from the mayor.
Oh, boy. Council, um, Madam Clerk?
Um, yeah, I just want to, for clarification, because that's how that item was presented to us. So for future things, when um, Councilman Abdallah asks me in five years to look for something, I should remove that from the backup for this item because it should not have been presented to us. You understand what I'm saying, not, Council?
I know. I, I, I really recommend that we make the motion just based on the front page.
I will remove it as it was improperly attached to the document that was brought over from the mayor's office.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Level Councilman right there, ladies and gentlemen.
Further discussion before we vote on this?
Well, uh, I'm sorry, one more, one more.
Councilman Abdullah, go ahead.
So this is also from my business. If we're gonna extend this thing on a day-to-day basis, the problem I have with that is there's no end date. So technically, and I'm getting crazy here, but we can do with this thing for another year, year and a half. And attorneys in the Zoom meeting can attest to that, that, that keeps it open-ended. So to me, I'd like to amend it with you guys' permission, or maybe vote, to keep on a day-to-day basis, but let's do this for either thirty or forty-five days, and then have the mayor's administration come back to us for approval or an extension. I, I, I don't like it completely open-ended. It, it, if it's day-to-day basis, it could be four years, technically.
Agree with you, Dave.
Agree.
So are you guys, it's, I don't know if Gary should comment, or who should, or maybe our HR Director, I mean, how many days is reasonable enough?
Forty-five reasonable.
Make your motion, Dave.
Okay, I'd like, okay, I'd like to amend the motion, which would be eight B. Um, okay, I'm gonna, I, uh, Clerk, I don't need to repeat the whole motion. Do I just do one sentence, correct? Or do I repeat the whole motion?
Go ahead and repeat the whole motion. That way we're clear and concise and.
All right, I motion that Dearborn Heights City Council approves the extension of the agreements between the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights Police Supervisors and the City of Dearborn Heights and Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association, TPOAM, on a day-to-day basis, uh, until a new agreement is reached and approved, not to exceed forty-five days from today's date as outlined in item eight B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have item eight C. This is Commission on Business Appointments for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Budget Amendments.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointments of Doc, Mr. Donald Colemanian and Mr. Ali Baydun to the newly established Commission on Business, terms to expire January second, twenty twenty-three, as outlined in eight C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Budget Amendments.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following budget amendments to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget as outlined in eight D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman, I have Councilman Abdallah. Go ahead, please.
Uh, my question to Mariana or Mr. Jawad. Now, do we know if the city had borrowed any money from restricted funds in the previous year or this year?
Who's that directed towards, Councilman?
The Controller will be fine.
Okay, let's unmute the Controller.
He, yes, hello, uh, hello, Councilman Abdallah and fellow council members. Uh, I, um, in regards to what was happening before I was here, honestly, I, I have to look that up and get back to you. I should be able to get you an answer sometime tomorrow on that, if they were using restricted funds, yeah.
That's fine. My second question, do you know if the previous administration or this administration had borrowed any money without going back to the city council?
I'm not, I'm not aware of this, this administration borrowing any money without going back to the city council. I'm not aware of that. So, I mean, I can tell you what I'm aware of, and I've never, I've never heard anything or seen anything that led me to believe that.
That's very comforting. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, the city owned property for one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, and one of those papers, do you have any idea what property we own for one million, one hundred and fifty thousand?
I mean, we can look, we can look that up. Honestly, I don't have a listing in front of me at this time.
I'm trying to find it. Anyway, if you can get back to me, I appreciate it, and I thank you for what you do and you and your team, and the mayor and the team. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, next I have Councilman Abdullah.
Madam Chair, I had a question for the Controller. Uh, one of the fees on here, they had the legal fees at seventy-five thousand for the council, city council, and that was adjusted to fifteen thousand. Uh, first of all, I've always been in favor, as you know, of not having a large amount of separate fees, separate legal fees for the council. I've always felt us in the city should work as one body, us in administration specifically. So I never felt we needed our own attorney, but that was my personal opinion, as I've mentioned before. But I don't ever recall it being at seventy-five thousand for the city council ever, so I'm, I'm just trying to get a clarification on that from, um, the Controller, please.
Okay, your, your question was about the city council having a line item for an attorney, for attorney fees?
Well, on here, it says legal fees for city council seventy-five thousand, which was the two thousand twenty, twenty-one amended budget, and then the budget adjustments for the year two thousand twenty, twenty-one was down from seventy-five to fifteen thousand. I'm just trying to get clarification of that.
Okay, so, um, maybe this is something we should have clarified before the meeting, but these budget amendments, we're gonna do them in a couple of stages, actually. Um, we're getting towards the end of the year, every, this usually happens, and because of the COVID, we've had a lot of people going over to budget, you know, for certain light items. So we wanted to do a budget amendment or a budget adjustment now, uh, so that we can, you know, move around some money and try to get as much into the, the, the line items that are being used as possible. Uh, and then going forward, after we, we, we finalize all our expenses and everything, we'll do a final budget amendment that you guys will vote on and approve, hopefully. Uh, so I wouldn't look too much into the amounts, uh, that, that we, we put in there. We were trying to basically adjust stuff based on the department's forecasts of what they saw themselves spending in these light items towards the end of when we needed to submit the budget. And Mariana has a, uh, has, uh, some input on this too. Uh, you know, we all met as, as a budget, uh, uh, budget team, and we discussed this, but Mariana wants to give you some input on that too, in addition to what I just said.
Go ahead, please.
Sorry. I just wanted to add that the seventy-five thousand dollars that you're asking about, Mr. Abdallah, was in the proposed budget that we had. So, so it was approved at some point by council that was on the GL account. Just to answer that question specifically.
No, I, I got a quick question. So you're adding fifteen to the seventy-five, or are you taking the seventy-five down to fifteen?
We're, we're, uh, if, if I'm correct, we're adjusting it down to the fifteen.
So you're taking sixty thousand away from that budget?
Yeah.
It was projected for the legal fees.
Is, is that, I, yeah, I'd need to, you know, can I take a look at that? I'm gonna need five seconds to go away.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, actually.
Yeah, because it was kind of hard to tell on this. I mean.
He's driving to City Hall to get it.
No, I can, I can come back. I'm just looking up.
No, 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 no. I was, I was talking about the revenue to the car, messing around.
Mister, if I may, I just opened it. Um, it does seem like it's an addition to the budget because. it does seem like it's an addition to the budget because the current activity is at eighty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-three. So we're adding some more in case an additional bill comes in by the end of the month. So we're adding twenty thousand just to make sure that we have enough funds to cover it by the end of the year, in case anything comes in.
That clarifies it. Thank you, Mariana.
Okay, that, that makes sense then. Um, any further, oh, I'm sorry, we have Councilman Abdallah.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We have overtime for the police, uh, department. One million one hundred and fifty thousand, and we are negative hundred and fifty. Is this what's left over, or we are in the negative hundred and fifty thousand? We used more than we should.
Which line item is that again? I'm sorry.
It's the police department, department three hundred, the sixth line going down.
That means we owe the hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Does that mean the police work hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than they should, what was budgeted?
Again, let me double check and compare it to the actual activity.
Was this the overtime?
Yes.
Because I believe we tried to reduce it, then we brought it back because we didn't use the money before I became on the.
Wait, we're sorry, apologies. It's in the parentheses, which means that it, we're taking it away.
Okay, so that, they, that means we have that much left, uh, or we reducing it?
We're reducing it from one million one hundred and fifty thousand to one million. Their current activity is seven hundred and ninety with seven hundred and fourteen.
Okay, Mariana, last question, are we expecting more, uh, amendment before June thirtieth, thirty-first?
Probably not before June thirty-first, but before the August wrap-up for the, um, audits.
So we have basically to adjust all the accounts to be balanced. We cannot leave anything negative.
Yes, we're hoping that we are leaving enough funding in there for all of the expenses that are coming in, but we may miss just a few items that will have to be amended once again.
Okay, thank you.
Next I have Hassan Jamal, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just to clarify for the other or the upcoming questions regarding the budget amendment. Budget amendments are done not to add or, or, or take away. Budget amendments are to actually adjust accounting, whether we spend more or we spend less. There is no balances. Uh, this budget amendment, uh, was because there was account where overspent, not because of violation or overspending, because there was issues with how we record our grant in the GL system and how we wires, uh, money without going to the accounting system. So at this time, we are almost up to that degree of compliance, and it takes some time to complete that. I just want everybody to know that this particular budget amendment, it is in compliance, I review it. It's kinda confusing, it's, it's kinda long, because we wanted to do whatever we can before June thirty to show that our, uh, balance or the trial balance is not too much different from our bank account. Uh, I want everybody to know that we are dealing with issue with the state, as you know, and we are resolving those issue, and we are resolving actually those issues positively. Uh, so, if there's any other question I can answer, I, I suppose to, to make, I suppose that I, I did explain it any, in a civil way, not in an accounting way, because it's very difficult sometimes to present accounting matters and financial complex matters to the public in a simplified way. If there's a specific questions regarding matters of compliance with the accounting, please call me or send me an email, we can explain that further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal.
Thank you. Did anyone have any further questions before we vote on this? At this time, we are voting on eight D, which is the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Budget Amendment. All those in favor say aye. Yeah, just have it. Next, we have FEMA House Closing Purchase Program.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to close the purchasing of two four zero seven seven courier, two four one 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 courier, two four one two seven courier, and two four three three nine courier. In addition, authorize a treasurer to disperse payment according to the E-title company distribution of, of proceeds as detailed in council-approved purchase agreement as outlined in ninety, and I have the purchase prices of each home to give you. Uh, the first one is two four one 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 courier in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents. The second home of two four zero seven seven courier in the amount of a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents. The next home is two four three three nine courier for one hundred thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars, sixty-four cents. And the final home of two four one two seven courier in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-one cents.
Okay, um.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So on this particular one, I had a little bit of an issue. So let, let me start with, I'm absolutely positive and okay, and feel great about the fact that we're getting, uh, some of these residents out of this unfortunate situation as far as the flooding and what have you is concerned. The concern I had is we only had this paper, we didn't have nothing else to go by. Now, I spoke just before the meeting with our director Hassan Jamal, and he told me that he's emailing me copies of the closing documents, and this was like about twenty, twenty-five minutes before the meeting. I wanna make it clear, a hundred percent not his fault. Uh, he had received them from a title company, I guess fairly recently also himself. So with that being the case, I tried as much as possible just before the council meeting to go through, you know, closing documents for four different houses. Frankly, you know, with limited time, I just skimmed through them as much as I can. Uh, nothing that stood out crazy out of the ordinary, but that's very little time to be able to look over closing documents, although I'm very experienced. It's just too short of a time. I personally would prefer that we set a special meeting so that all the other council members can have the opportunity to look at these papers if they did or didn't. Uh, just a special voting meeting, even if it's the next couple of days, I, it wouldn't bother me, but I think that would be a good idea. With additional, what additional comment? On the, and I don't know who has these, to be honest with you, I don't know who's had an opportunity to look them over yet. I don't know if it's Gary Miyatki, I don't know if it's, uh, Hassan. Okay, Gary, have you had a chance to look at them?
Okay, let's unmute corporate counsel, hold on.
No, I'm sorry, I have not. I received them after five o'clock today.
Right.
Kinda work on other stuff.
So with that being the case, I personally would like to suggest, Council Chair, that we just, just bump it, even if it's for a day, so that everybody has an opportunity, including our attorney, a chance to look them over. Myself, as a realtor, I skimmed through them, they looked fine, but skipped still, but there was a concern. I looked at the title insurance policy, and, and I'm gonna ask this one to Gary Miyatki, we're paying the title insurance policies and the closing fees. Was there any particular reason for that, as a city? Because typically, a homeowner, even once a cash sale, a homeowner pays for the title policy.
My understanding is that, uh, Harry Calagirakis had actually reviewed these documents. Uh, he would be in a better position to answer those questions. Perhaps it's required in the purchase agreement.
And that's the thing, I had nothing to be able to, with such. Is Harry on, is Harry on the call?
Yes.
Oh, he is?
Or is, oh, he's not? Yeah, that doesn't help either, so maybe we should refer this back for the next meeting.
The only, the only other thing is with the director Hassan Jamal, he did mention to me that, uh, per the grants and what have you, the, the homes have to be torn down by no later than August the first. With that being the case, obviously coordinated contractors, et cetera, et cetera, with COVID, it's gonna be very tight, what he calls. So I highly suggest, Council Chair, if we are gonna set a meeting and vote ASAP, maybe one of those mornings, tomorrow morning, whatever.
We have a, we have a motion on the table to approve this.
Okay, well, uh, at this time, Councilman, I, I personally.
People that are crap homes, and you guys keep stalling all the time. I would be angry. You can go ahead and say what you want, Council Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Uh, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Councilman Baydun.
Cause I didn't hear who seconded the motion. Let me ask, if you allow me, did FEMA read those documents and approve them, and approve the price, approve the, the title work and, uh, the appraisal? Mr. Jamal, can you answer that?
Let me find him. Can I be, find Mr. Jamal? Okay, I got Mariana, let's see if she can help us.
Hello, uh, Mr. Abdallah, yes, uh, Mr. Jamal has been in constant communication with FEMA. They have reviewed every step of the process, and all of the amounts that had been approved have been approved by FEMA as well.
Okay, and, uh, I do respect, uh, you know, Mr. David, David Abdullah, Councilman Abdullah, I respect his experience because he knows about these issues more than us. As much as I appreciate what he said, if FEMA has approved all these, I think that is good enough for me.
And let me correct myself, it's not FEMA itself, it is the Michigan State Police, who is the one in charge of all the FEMA grants within Michigan. Just correction there.
They put their stamp on it?
But Councilman, uh, uh, Council Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, so again, we're talking about documents for four properties that are gonna be closing, and again, this is no reflection on anybody here, I wanna make it clear, it's not the administration's problem. But the, the, according to Hassan Jamal, he sent the closing documents in the last, just, and he said, he's, he said it shows in the email, but he said in the last hour, hour and a half. And then we received it in the last twenty, twenty-five minutes before closing. I would love to approve this. I'm just saying, the realtor, if you gave me four.
I'm with you, Councilman, I'm with you a hundred percent.
If I may, uh, Councilman, if, as, as a realtor, you said to me, hey, Dave, you have a closing in twenty minutes, here's four properties, here's all the closing documents, look them over for the sellers, I'd say, are you crazy? I can't do it. It's just too short of a time period. It's nobody's fault, I'm not saying it's somebody's fault. The title company just finished them and just sent them to administration. All I'm saying is, if we delayed this until tomorrow morning, it wouldn't be the end of the world. So everybody, including our attorneys, can have an opportunity to look it over, that's all I'm saying.
Council Chair.
I, I have a tendency to agree with you, Councilman, um, we did not have enough time to look at these, and we owe it to the residents.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydun, you are next.
I'm sure, I'll let, uh, Councilman Wansol go before me, that's okay, I know he's been asking.
Okay, Councilman Wansol?
There's a motion on the table, it's been seconded, and we vote on it, if you don't want, don't, you vote no, if you want, you vote yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this?
Madam Chair, I just, I'll, I'll just leave some remarks before we go ahead and vote on this. Um, you know, I, I just wanna just put it out there as, as council members, it's okay to agree to disagree at times, I, I don't see, you know, you, you know, the reason to get all, you know, hostile or get angry, it's okay. Um, I think Councilman Abdullah, what he's saying, and it's simply saying, allow each other to be able to read the docs. I don't see an issue with that at all. I think that's very okay. Um, and, and you know what, at the end of the day, this is democracy, we're gonna make a vote, there's a vote on the table, and let's go ahead and make on that one.
Okay, at this time, I need to find Councilman, um, tons, oh, there he is, okay, he's unmuted, good.
What number are we on? I, my computer froze.
Okay, we are on eight E.
Eight C?
E, like Edward.
Thank you.
Gary Miyatki is trying to get your attention.
Okay, let me go back up to him then. Corporate counsel Miyaki, go ahead, please.
Perhaps an easy fix, uh, approve it, subject to approval by Attorney Harry Calagirakis. That will, I'll make sure that it's been reviewed, and you'll have done your due diligence.
I'd be okay with that, because that would give us an opportunity, I, I'm sorry, Council Chair, if I make a quick statement, I'm sorry. I, I'd be okay with that, because then that would give, if, if it's like that, so let's hypothetically pretend, or not pretend, hypothetically assume that the counselor will give us an answer tomorrow by four P M. So if all of us have an opportunity to look them over tonight, and we do have a problem, then we could get ahold of him and say, don't approve it, because there's a problem on this. I have no problem with that.
You know, we've got madam clerk, uh, there seems to be an issue, go ahead.
Well, I just want clarification, and maybe Corporation Counsel can, can clarify this for me. In the document that was presented, it says, um, motion to authorize the mayor and the clerk to close the purchasing of the following form houses. Um, but I believe we have to sign them, and shouldn't that signature, authorizing our signature be included in that motion? It was not in the letter that was presented, or closing the purchasing, does that?
Well, you could, you could include that, and to approve, and to authorize appropriate sig- signatures subject to review and approval by Assistant Corporation Counsel, Harry Calagirakis. And then I think you're covered.
Okay, thank you, because that wasn't included, so I wanted to make sure of purchasing or not.
I made that motion amended as counsel, uh, Corporation Counsel Gary Miyaki, uh, has said.
Hold on, I got a second.
Okay, uh, or, excuse me. If I was allowed to be talking, I will save you all this time. Actually, Gary, uh, 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 agree with Gary after the fact that our lawyer is gonna be closing the deal. It's not me closing the deal. It's very simple. We have a lawyer, and our lawyer presented and closing the deal. So thank you, just please approve it and move on.
Yes.
Yeah, let's vote on it.
Okay, but just to be clear, is it with the amendment, it is with amendment?
I, I did, I did, I did make that.
I just wanna make it clear, thank you.
Okay, let, let's make it clear again, Councilman Muscat, can you please do the amended? So everybody's clear on it, and then we'll get the support and move on.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor and clerk to close the purchase agreements of two four zero seven seven courier, two four one 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 courier, two four one two seven courier, and two four three three nine courier in amounts that I had, I had previously stated. In addition, authorize the treasurer to disperse the payment according to the E-title company distribution of proceeds as detailed in a council-approved purchase agreement as outlined in ninety, as well, as long as, uh, Gary Miyati, can you please take over?
Sure, uh, further, uh, authorize the signatures on necessary documents and all of the foregoing, subject to approval by Assistant Corporation Counsel, Harry Calagirakis.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baydun, is there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have maximum, Maximus Proposal RFP Full Cost Allocation Plan and Fringe Benefit Rates calculation dated June seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Ma'am Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved Maximus Proposal RFP Full Cost Allocation Plan Cap and Fringe Benefits Rate calculation for, uh, year two thousand twenty dash two thousand twenty-one cap and fringe benefits rates in the amount fourteen thousand dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the proposal on behalf of the city and the treasurer. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the proposal on behalf of the city and the treasurer. Pay the proposed fee. As outlined in item A F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Beadun. Is there any discussion?
Can somebody explain what this is about, please?
Well, it was presented by Treasurer Hicks Clayton and the mayor. So is either one of them here?
Either one of them is fine.
Okay, let's refer to the mayor then. Go ahead, please. Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to defer that to our. Mister Jamal, he was actually, we discussed it.
Okay, go ahead, Mister. Hassan Jamal, go ahead, please.
Thank you, the mayor. Uh, this is what's necessary. First of all, this was necessarily because the previous practice of allocating. Expenditures regarding health and fringe benefits were not done. In compliance with our auditors. And with State of Michigan Treasury Department Charter of Accounting and Practices. Therefore. In, in an effort to, to allocate the cost of the French benefits. Between six different accounts, six different funds in the city. General Fund unrestricted, city employees, two. The police and fire retirement. Three, general government retirees. Four, water fund. Five, library fund. Six, CDBG fund. To be able to allocate. A near correct number. And be fair, we need to do a correct calculation. Which we don't do right now in the city. We do somehow, some way, but we don't really have a mechanism. That's why this particular company do that particular allocation between funds. So the finance team ordered by the mayor to find a solution for that. So myself, the HR Director, the Controller. And. Myself and Mariana, we did meet and discuss that with our. Plant Moran consultant management team and they recommended firm such that firm. They are specialized in doing that. That's why we are presenting this to you for approval. I encourage you to approve it so we will have our accounting and finance in line with how it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Mister Jamal.
Thank you. At this time, I have, um, our Madam Clerk.
I didn't finish, man.
Well, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk was next and then you are next.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, did you have a question on something?
Yeah, I just have a quick question and while you haven't voted on it yet, I was just looking through the backup and I apologize for not seeing something sooner, but. If it's approved, um, you know, we take, we handle getting the signatures. But what's attached is a sample document. Do you know who that will present that contract if it's approved to us so that we can complete the signature?
Yes, absolutely. The contract will be approved by our Corporation Counsel.
Okay, should that be? Motion then? I'm sorry, Mister Jamal, should that be included in the motion then?
It's up to our Corporation Counsel and how we wanna present it.
Okay. So we will have to amend that motion then to include prior error. Signature after your approval, Corporation Counsel. After your review.
Yeah, cause I noticed this just says sample. It's not an actual contract.
Well, sample presented to you, I guess it's a common practice. Uh, Mister Miyaki, just do whatever you have to do and let's move on with this.
Counsel, I, no, no, it's, let me run the meeting, please. Councilman Abdul Haq, go ahead, please.
Uh, I, I really wanted to speed up the, this, but I have to ask the question. Is this going to be universal? Rate for, of benefits for everybody in the city or each department has different rate based on the contractual agreements?
Good question.
Director Jamal.
He's been asked on you. Please let me do this. Go ahead.
I mean, if Miss Subota has anything else to, to say, go ahead, uh, go ahead, Miss Subota.
Um, Hassan Jamal, are you speaking in regards to this?
Uh, yes, regarding to the maximum. We are discussing maximum, correct?
Did you hear the question, Hassan?
Yes, I did.
Do you want time to answer it?
You, you are talking about universal rate or universal? Rate of what? Rate of what? Be specific.
Of benefits. Fringe benefits rates. That's what it's that.
Well, the, the, the French benefit rate refer to the coefficient of how much we charge. Over the basic salary. So the, I mean, if you wanna be to, to, to go specific, yes. So this is the answer, Mister Abdul Haq. We have a basic salary. Uh, above the basic salary, there is a coefficient of what we call French benefit. The French benefit includes, whether a state, if a city is, we have no city. Then it includes also, you know, social security. It include Medicare. Then all about that, it will include the cost of the healthcare. Then it will include the cost of the retirement benefit. Then it will include also our newly formed Act one fifteen. We have two Acts one fifteen, the cost that we pay every year to maintain our compliance with the state requirement of Act two hundred one twelve. So there is too many layers and too many components of the rate of coefficient. That you, you tack to the salary of each employee. Right now in the city, we use point nine five. We use point nine five as a coefficient. For everybody that you add to the salary of an employee to calculate their total cost. We, we figure out that zero point five or fifty-nine percent of your basic salary. Whether it is an hourly, whether it is a salary, wh- it for full-time. It's maybe need to be adjusted. I think fifty-nine percent. Above the basic salary for full-time employees, it's not being adjusted. After we did a plan with the city to add the act. But to add the, the, the Act one fifteen, the two pension. You know, uh, funding for our one hundred seventy-two million dollars liability. We are gonna be paying, okay, to achieve forty percent in forty and thirty years.
Director Jamal, is this to, is, is this going to improve the French benefit of the employees? Or it's going to reduce it?
Okay, Mister Abdul Haq, it's gonna improve the dis- the distribution. Of the allocated funding between the six different city independent funds. Yes, yes, in closing, yes, your question about improving the French benefit. Of the employees has to do, all what has to do is contract negotiation. It's a matter of, i- i- it's a matter of bargaining for the benefits. We are only doing the calculation to allocate whatever they are approved. For the employees among the city funds. As I said again, there's six different independent funds in the city. And at this time, we are not allocating that based on any scientific or mathematical or accounting. Format. Maximum can come and help the city allocating. Those particular costs among those six different funds to be in compliance. With our Plant Moran, you know, recommendation for over six years that we don't have internal control. And we are not allocating the fund correctly among funds.
Thank you very much for the explanation.
You.
Question, any more question?
Excuse me. Next, we have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this was on a previous agenda, as I recall, and. Elizabeth Sabota Perry, our Personnel Director, helped explain. Why this calculation can't be done by Plant Moran. But, um. Uh, if it's the same. Job that we're hiring Maximus to do. This, this is not something that can be done by Plant Moran.
Who are you directing that through?
Elizabeth Sabota Perry, the Personnel Director.
Okay, we're gonna go find Elizabeth.
Yeah, that was her previous answer, as I remember. And the comptroller said, we don't want, um. Plant Moran, uh, judging itself or auditing itself.
Oh, oh, there's, there's Elizabeth. Let me unmute her. She finally popped up here.
Hello, that, that is consistent. That answer's consistent. They wanna maintain their independence, so to speak, as our auditors. And this is a company that was recommended by them and it has been used by other communities as well for this successfully.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I have Councilman Beadun.
Uh, Madam Chair, everything is all set. I just wanna keep in mind that we still have ten more pages on this, so. We got a long day ahead of us and I just wanna like remind everybody, that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? Just to remind everybody, we are voting on eight F, which is the Maximus proposal.
It's gonna be subject to seeing the, uh, uh, our attorney reviewing the contract, right?
Okay, go ahead, make the motion.
Thank you.
That I, if I originally made the motion, then I will add on there, subject to our attorney review of the contract. Thank you.
And who supported it? Councilman Beadun, do you still support it?
I always support Councilman David Abdullah. And this.
All right. Any further discussion before we vote on eight F? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have City American Express AMX Credit Card Usage.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Beadun.
Thank you. I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the American Express City Credit Card to. To be issued to each department head with the amount of one thousand four hundred dollars maximum limit. To be used solely to pay for the eligible city-related expenditures as outlined in A G.
Supported by Councilman Abdul Haq, Councilman Muscat. Go ahead, please.
I believe the former administration took away all the cards. I believe that's what they said. I am against this totally. The amount is too much money. That's just under a threshold of. Of council approval of fifteen hundred dollars and. We have no control over fourteen hundred dollars every month for everybody going on. And I, I definitely don't like this idea. Way too much money.
Okay, Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Councilman Muscat. So one of the problems is. Uh, if somebody's auditing and looking at the credit card bills each month. And that's a lot of credit card bills. You know, in the past, the city's been able to pay expenses, uh, and the, I'd like to hear the comptroller's. Thoughts on, uh, item eight G.
Okay, comptroller, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi, honorable councilman. Basically, this was something that we had set up for only a couple of departments. And the issue isn't so much with coming up with an amount. It's the, the credit card companies have these limits that they have in place. We had a relationship with AMX and when we contacted AMX, this is the, the minimum that they would allow. Uh, on the account. Uh, so we figured we could, for now, we could use that. And then tell people that it's replacing your petty cash and this is the limit that you should be using. Cause technically, right now, you can go out and spend a thousand dollars and then say. You know, this was from petty cash and I really had to use it. Can you spread it over two months and all that? So we just assumed we would tell the directors of each department, hey, you know, limited to this much. And but we're, just to, to keep you informed, we're in the process of discussing with other credit card companies, seeing what other options we have as well. Uh, but we've had several departments that told us that they want this in place as soon as possible. So this is, uh, you know, this is who, uh, Lisa, who I believe is off today. She was. Uh, she wasn't at, at the office, but, uh, you know, she was in the process of talking to AMX about this. So that's how we had them set up already. Uh, but, you know, it's up to you guys again. Uh, obviously, we're looking for lower limits on each one so we can control it. But I mean, if you have any other questions related to that too, I can probably help answer.
Madam Chair, uh, comptroller, when you say minimums, you mean the maximum. This was the, you said the. They have different minimums. You mean maximums.
The minimum.
Hundred is a maximum, right?
It's, but it's a minimum maximum. Yeah, I'm sorry. Because we can get a twenty thousand dollar credit card, right? I think we have a good rating in the city, but. We're trying to get like the lowest maximums possible per card. And then some of them say, oh, it's as a group, you have to do it. Uh, you, you can't have a man, man, minimum or max, like a little maximum for each group. We do it as a whole and then you can monitor internally. So we're, you know, we are, we're trying to, we're trying to iron it out with different companies and see what our options are as well. But this was the best we found so far.
What, what is, what is like, for example, what does the police do for getting gas or does, does any department use just a debit card or a? Something to, uh, so that it goes on the city's, you know, log that, uh, this police car is getting gas at this station?
The way it was being done before was with, through Lisa, uh, Treasurer Clayton. Uh, she basically held on to the two accounts, I believe, one for fire, one for the police. And, uh, she would handle, receive the statements from them and it would be monitored internally that way. So we're trying to change the policy so that it's better, more transparent and easier to monitor. And all the departments are kind of in the same boat.
But how, how would the city employee, for example, at the point of sale, pay for? You know, whatever, without a credit card. How would they pay for the gas or pay for?
Well, they pay with, the, the police department has, has a credit card that they were using. And that's for that reason. Yeah, and we're having, and that's the reason we're trying to change the policy. Because it was really hard to mind. And how do, how do you tell a police officer, hey, don't? Don't fill up the, the car now, cause you know, you've reached your maximum. So I mean, we're trying to figure out a way to, you know, use this as the, just the petty cash. And then set up a system so it's easier to monitor everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Lisa's here.
I know. Let me call on her. We've got Treasurer Hicks Clayton. I think she wants to chime in on this. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I do, I wanted to say, if you look at your backup. You'll see some policies that are gonna be revisited on your agenda, um, a little later under item nine. But those policies explain, your internal policies explains to you exactly how this works and what it will look like. So these credit cards, what we're talking about, a lot of cities do this now. Where they have the credit card system. It's actually linked to their BSNA, which helps with the reconciliation piece. But, um, we were to issue, we would go cashless on our petty cash system. Um, but we do have a backup where sometimes the police department, when they go downtown to court, they need cash to pay for parking. So we have that built in as well, where if you needed to cash, you could come get a, fill out a voucher to get cash, say twenty dollars for parking that day. And then bring that receipt back. But it's really important to say that this is a cashless policy for petty cash. Where the departments, and again, it's probably like, um, comptroller said, five or six that maybe requested it. They think it's a great idea where they can use a credit card instead of the cash, but it does have to be reconciled balance monthly. Because that's how the statement gets paid. And the comptroller's office does that. And so I hope that helps, but I think if you look at the policies, that will help answer most of your questions. Thank you.
At this time, I have, still have several council members that need to ask questions. And we will only be calling on certain department heads if that council person asks for it to help streamline this meeting. Next, I have Councilman Abdul Haq.
To my knowledge, Madam Chair, the, the.
To my knowledge, Madam Chair, there were only two cards. One was the treasurer and one was the chief of police. The limit was on, the treasurer was 25,000. And I didn't know that, how much was for the police. And the way it was paid on monthly basis, it comes to the treasurer office, then it's sent to the comptroller. The comptroller issued the check and sent back to the treasurer to sign it and send it to American Express. I really think we should have a little more control over this. I would recommend that the limit, I don't know if it can be less than 1,400. But it looks like Mr. Badri Jawad is saying the maximum minimum is 1,400, right?
Yeah, yeah. And Lisa could probably confirm that.
So I would just ask that we keep track of all these credit cards on monthly basis and make sure that they have receipts for everything they buy, and it's documented properly.
Absolutely.
Okay, next I have Councilman Abdullah.
Mind just a quick statement. If they're checked and double-checked, actually, if I had a department head, and I can't trust him with $1,000, he wouldn't be a department head.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, these are people that are dealing with budgets for their particular departments of a million, two million, whatever it happens to be. And you got a credit card that's documented what you spent, and you turn it into controllers who are going to be double-checking, so they're cross-checking each other. If you can't trust them with $1,000, they shouldn't even be in our department. So I'm okay with it.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. You know, I just want, you know, I did a little bit of research on this. I called a couple of different councils. I actually called Dearborn, and I called a friend out in La Bona, and I said, hey, question. The department heads, do they carry, anybody carry a credit card, you know, that's, it's limited? And they said, yes, it's very, very normal. I said, nice. So I found out that we didn't carry one, or any of the departments didn't have one. They asked, you know, does Dearborn Heights? And I said, well, we're putting it up on the agenda to vote on that for, you know, Tuesday. They said, yeah, it's actually very, very convenient for the administration, the council, the department head. I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I was actually a little surprised. So just putting that out there for you guys, when you guys go ahead and do make this vote. I'm okay with it as well.
Councilman Muscat?
You know, we had a problem, I don't know, four years ago, when someone purchased something without city council knowing about it, and I'm just gonna go ahead and send it auto-start for their car. So what happens when someone buys something with a credit card, and it's already paid for and done? Then what do you do?
Well, that's where you're holding, you know.
Oh, wait a minute. We want to trust our directors, but yet we don't want to trust what's in any signed document for selling some houses. Okay? It works both ways here, ladies and gentlemen. We've got, I've got credit card statements that I had to ask for and get, and I see a bunch of food being spent on credit cards, and I have no idea why food is being spent on credit cards. Okay? Now, I'm not gonna mention nothing, because I'm gonna call that department head on. And that's what we should be doing, is calling the department heads, instead of debating like this all day long for three or four hours. Okay? But I don't, I don't like the idea of a credit card being used, okay, without proper notification to the council. We're supposed to be watching the money. And how are you gonna watch the money as a councilman? Where every time somebody goes out and buys something on a credit card? So that's my, my opinion on it. So we can continue on and take a vote, and vote yes, vote no.
Add on? Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, we got Councilman Conston next.
No, I already spoke. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun, you're next.
Madam Chair, if I can just add on, maybe we can get a, you know, a monthly breakdown of what was spent over from every single department head. So maybe, you know, not every week, but once a month, every last Tuesday of the month, get a breakdown of what was spent out of that 1,400. Maybe we can agree to amend that, you know, this motion.
I'm just gonna make a statement. I, like Councilman Muscat, have looked at past credit card bills. And when you see food, how are you going to get the money back for that? You can't return it. It's already a done deal. And it does happen a lot, because I've looked at credit card statements over the last four years, just like Councilman Muscat does. Trust me, there is a lot of questionable things. And we only have two credit cards out there right now. So, yeah, if you can imagine all of the different departments, it could get to be a mess. And I do believe that's why they only gave it to the police department and the treasurer's office to have some kind of control over it. Because the mayor didn't even have it in the previous administration.
Madam Chair, what if we wanted to monitor? What if we had monthly updates?
Councilman, I agree. But when you look at those updates, you're gonna not be happy.
Well, then, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, no problem. Okay, at this time, I think we're ready to take a vote. This meeting is going way too long, and we're not even halfway through it. At this time, we are voting on the City American Express card, which is eight G. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Let's take a vote. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Conston?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
Can't hear him.
You muted yourself. Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Council Chair Melanowski Maxwell?
No.
Councilman Abdul Haq?
No.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is Deva Kiosk Network Master Services Agreement.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the master service agreement with Deva Kiosk Network Services to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in eight H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq?
Since the treasurer is here, I would like her to explain to us and to the public what this is going to improve the services in the city.
Go ahead, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilman Abdul Haq, for asking. This is very exciting, Deva. Deva will provide us with an improved user-friendly, easier, one-click payment option. That will be web-based online, as well as an app that you can download to your phone. And the kiosk, which the city of Dearborn Heights, throughout our community, already has four kiosks at different locations throughout our city. And so you will be able to pay, initially, when we start, you'll pay, you can pay your water bill or your tax payment by the web-based, or the app, or the kiosk. And eventually, we hope to move to any thing that is a pay-for service, like permits or animal licenses in your trash canisters, where you could do it all online, one click, easy and done. You can get reminder on your bills when they're due by email or text. You can get your receipts texted to you and emailed, so you can go paperless. And again, it's secure, it's efficient, streamlined, and it's really just moving us forward on that particular item.
Madam Treasurer, is this going to be accepting credit cards in cash, or just credit cards and checks? And are they going to be located in safe places?
Yes, thank you. You can accept credit card, and we are currently negotiating that down from the three percent that you're currently paying now for credit card use. You can pay in cash, as a kiosk as well. And again, we don't have to maintain the kiosk company, Deva does. You can pay by check. And so it gives you some payment flexibility and options. The other thing is, like, the kiosk, it's a one-stop payment center, so you can pay your DTE bill there as well. And as far as safety, they are currently in four locations, including Dearborn Fresh on Ford Road, and a couple other large grocery stores in Dearborn Heights. So I think they're very safe, yes. And we're also part of a network. I do want to add that we're part of a network throughout the state of Michigan. There's other communities like Dearborn, city of Detroit, that are on the same network. So if you're even on vacation somewhere, and you're, you know, somewhere where you want to make a payment at another kiosk, you'll be able to do so, because we're part of a network.
Do we have to pay any money for lease or rent to put those kiosks in those places, or they are just free?
The ones already in place, we do not, because somebody else pays that, and that's part of their contract.
You cut enough. You cut enough, Madam Treasurer.
Beyond the four that already exist, then there would be fees incurred by, I'm sorry. Again, the existing four kiosks are on.
You cut enough. You cut enough.
So we do not pay for those.
Okay. Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Councilman Baydun.
Yeah, I'm not even moving. Let me try again. So the kiosk that exists, the four of them.
Oh, no, she muted herself.
It's okay.
Madam Treasurer, can you unmute? Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry.
Is it me, or is it her, Madam Chair?
It's her internet freezing.
Yeah.
She's obviously having an issue.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, my question, Madam Treasurer, is, you know, I know you said that sort of kiosks are going to be, there's some that are already in existing places. Is there a way that we're gonna have one in the south end of Dearborn Heights, instead of having a resident drive from the south end over to the north end to come to City Hall? Can we set up designated kiosks, so it's more convenient for some of our residents to be able to go in there, paid at the kiosk, and just, you know, be around the block, rather than driving all the way down Telegraph, coming around, up, down Fenton? Just being a little bit more convenient, I want to say? Is that possible?
Yes, Councilman. Very good question. And right now, Saturn Market, which is located on Dearborn, does have a kiosk.
Okay. Is that gonna be the only one on the south end of Dearborn Heights?
I would have to take a look. There's one on the market near Evergreen. And there's one on Ford Road and one on Saturn. I'd have to check and see where the fourth one is. I don't recall off the top of my head. So I do apologize for not knowing that.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, I was just gonna make the comment that I spoke with the treasurer in Dearborn, and they've had them, and they think they're fantastic. And I was also gonna mention that we do have one on the south end at the Saturn Food Market. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Conston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What are the fees charged to the user? Like, for example, the convenience fee charged to the user in addition to making the payment? So if someone pays a water bill of $100, what user fee do they pay?
Right.
Go ahead, please.
I know. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure I had the floor before answering. So with that, I mentioned that earlier, that when people use a credit card, it's a three percent processing fee that goes actually to the credit card company, the financial processor. We are, have negotiated a lower rate, and it should be in this contract in front of you, if you look through the work. But it is lower than the three percent. So we have been working on reducing those fees for our residents. So I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
Thank you. Any further comment before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is city-related accounting and financial practices.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council received note and file the currently-practiced accounting and financial process policy to track and account for the city's various departments, commissions, and board revenues expenditures as outlined in eight I.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have city petty cash.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Baydun?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the establishment of one petty cash at the city treasurer's office cashier window for city employees' cash reimbursement and cancel all previously established city departmental petty cash accounts. Eligible related city business expenditures will be reimbursed in cash up to a maximum of $100 per transaction as outlined in item eight J.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion?
Madam.
Councilman Abdul Haq?
I just want to make a statement. I want every commissioner, every resident in this city, that we assure you there will be no hate or prejudice against anybody. Everybody will be treated fairly. And that's why we are here. And I hope we all work together, because we are residents and we are human beings. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a question for Director Conston.
Hold on a minute. Let's get her unmuted. Okay.
Okay, I have a question. Do the senior trip coordinators use a petty cash?
They do. Well, we have one petty cash, and it's actually in our department, the Canfield Center. So when they have an expense, what we'll do is we take their receipt, and we reimburse them out of the petty cash. The issues that would be, there would be a lot of issues if we had to always go to the treasurer's office. I just want to be honest with that. And previously, when you talked about the credit card cards for the departments, there are a lot of trips that we're gonna have to not be able to do, because we have no way of paying for some of the locations, because they won't take a check, not even a city check. So I have some other issues that we can talk about later that other departments wouldn't have. But we do, in essence, do that, but we have one petty cash, and that's at the Canfield Community Center.
Okay, so if we approve this, and that goes away, it would cause some issues for our senior trips?
It would cause issues for our department and for our senior trips. I mean, we use the petty cash that we have for a lot of shopping before we have events. The treasurer's office is gonna see us an awful lot if we do it that way.
Is there any way that we could amend this to include the senior center as having a second one?
As far as for the trips?
This was presented by Treasurer Hicks. Let me unmute her and see if she can answer that.
Yeah, okay. I'd rather have, when you're saying senior centers, I'd rather have the one that we have at Canfield, because then we can control, you know, what's spent by everybody in the department, which we have in the past.
Let's amend it to say Canfield Center. Are you okay with that, Treasurer?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, absolutely. I think this particular item would have gone with if the the cashless policy would, or, you know, the, using the credit cards, what had passed. So this really, you know, I agree, because I know I talked to Director Conston, we've talked about this, certainly would support that.
Okay, so can someone amend this to eliminate all the petty cash except for the Canfield Center and the treasurer's office?
I will.
Councilman Abdullah?
All right, so I'd like to remake my motion. You said it's the Canfield Center and the treasurer's office?
Correct.
Okay, not to open up another cannon walls, but I was curious, just in terms of physicality, DPW. I know we don't have an official director right now, but there's another one I thought about when I went through this packet this weekend. I don't know if that would make a difference, I don't know if the mayor knows or anybody else.
Have you anybody representing DPW here that could speak upon that? And let us know.
If there is no one, then we can amend it later when we have, oh, we do have somebody?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm not speaking on behalf of DPW necessarily, but there's petty cash expenses, especially when you have two cash registers in two different locations, you need to make change for one thing. So you actually need some sort of a cash policy for that. And from what I, from what the treasurer had said, if we were doing a cashless policy, it is intended to go with the credit card. Because the reality is, we have dozens and dozens of programs throughout the year. And you have to make purchases for those programs for the residents to. for the residents to, it's not just senior trips, but it is for in-house programs that these things are used. So, you know, it's kind of unimplementable unless you don't want residents to get programs or some amenities in these programs to just say, no petty cash and no, no way of actually reimbursing staff if they need to make an expense for a program. So I would suggest maybe rethinking the package of policies because it does mess with residents' quality of life in many departments. So just something to consider.
Can I also have Mr. Blackburn? Go ahead, please. He's in DPW.
Okay, can you repeat, repeat the question?
Well, Mike, it wasn't so much a question. What it was is since we're going to be changing it for two different departments, the Recreation Department and I believe it was the Canfield Center, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. My concern was with DPW being so far away, they would also probably need some petty cash in their department versus driving over all the way from Van Born to City Hall to pick up just a few bucks. Doesn't make sense to me. And I was just wondering, is that an issue for you guys?
Having no petty cash is not an issue for us. There's other things that were discussed earlier, the meeting that would be a good idea, but that would be up to the director because different directors have different views on things. And I wouldn't want to speak on what a future director should or should not be saying. And we have a transition team right now, so. But as far as pay cash goes, there's no, there's no reason why we should have anything pay cash. If we need anything, we're not that far from City Hall.
I think Madam Treasurer would like to say something. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, I want to say, one, DPW doesn't have petty cash. They have another system that's set up. You know, they run to Home Depot, they have an account. But with this being said, because item eight G failed, I, and I would make the recommendation that we would actually refer these items or pull them because they do go hand in hand with that item. And because it failed, I would go ahead and remove that, this particular item as well. Let me see, what else do we have? The item of nine C, or excuse me, nine D would need to be removed as well because those go hand in hand and because the one failed, there's no point in really doing anything with those items. So nine D.
So are you asking us to remove eight J and nine D when we come to it? We can just hold it down?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. At this time, let's not further discuss this. We know what we need to do. All those in favor, say aye.
Of what? What are we voting on?
Why don't we just refer back?
We are voting on eight J, the city petty cash that Treasurer Hicks Clayton has asked us not to pass.
So she approved it. We got our Corporation Council wants to chime in.
Okay, let's see what he has to say. Go ahead.
I would recommend that you refer them back to the treasurer. All the items, name all of them right now and just it would be removed from the agenda and be all set. Thank you.
Perfect. So would someone like to make that motion? Councilman Muscat.
I move that City Council refer eight J and nine I back to the treasurer.
Support.
Large.
Or excuse me. That was nine, nine D, excuse me. Not nine D, nine D.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have city funds.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Would the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the treasures to open bank accounts at Comerica Bank for the American Rescue Plan Act and all city Dearborn Heights commissions as needed as outlined in eight K?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdellah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have, under reports from city officials, City Clerk Sanya, zoning board of appeals appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council rescind Council Motion twenty-one dash two-two-six and appoint Mr. Scott M. Morgan to the zoning board of appeals. His appointment is to replace Ollie Berry on the zoning board of appeals to fill unexpired term of May of twenty twenty-two as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton, financial institutions designated as depositories of city funds.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the Treasurer Hicks Clayton to formally recognize the following list of financial institutions as depositories of city funds as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton, credit card use policy.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, know, and file the credit card use policy as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we are going to nine E since we did already remove ninety and referred that back. Nine E is building and maintenance superintendent Blackburn Johnson Controls Service Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the service agreement of, for HVAC services, service to Johnson Controls starting July first, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars for the attached city buildings. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdellah, Councilman Muscat. Go ahead, please.
Councilor, thank you. I've never been a big fan of the way we do our service agreements. As far as our, as far as I'm concerned, our service agreements give us nothing. We're paying fifty-eight thousand dollars and eight hundred and forty dollars upfront. And I believe there was a gentleman that spoke earlier today on this item. I had already spoken to Director Hassan Jamal about this over the weekend. And it makes no sense to me whatsoever. The gentleman was correct about the forty hours in a week or eight hours a day, over eight hours for overtime. Nothing is specified here. And they've even omitted the refrigerant out of this. And it's totally, this is totally a useless service contract. It has been for years. I've spoken about it before. We need to do a better job of doing some sort of maybe have Corporation Council Miyaki sit on some of these things to give us something a little bit better than this. Again, ten percent discount, we're not getting anything.
Okay, Councilman, at this time, it looks like Mr. Blackburn, Superintendent Blackburn would like to speak on that. Go ahead, please.
Okay, couple things here. The contract is not paid up for. Oh, boy.
We can hear you. Superintendent Blackburn, I think your internet is freezing up and we're not hearing you.
They have rearranged their technician schedules to make sure that we get high priority service. There's never been a problem with it. The police, you guys said.
Say that, though.
Okay, Mike, can you repeat from the beginning because you got cut off?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have bad connection?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, what part did you not hear?
From the beginning.
The beginning.
Okay, the contract is billed quarterly to the city. The city does not pay it upfront. We have really good service response time with Johnson Controls. They do give us high, they do give us priority service. They do rearrange their technician schedules. If we have emergency service, there hasn't been, there hasn't been many problems with their response time. If they don't come that day, they're usually within twenty-four hours. The overtime is based on after normal business hours. Their technicians work seven to three-thirty, just like we do. And they're double timed as Sundays and holidays, just like us. And I cannot remember the last time I authorized any overtime or holiday use at all. Now, with that being said, with the police station, we'll have to see how that goes, but you guys have already approved that contract because the police station runs twenty-four seven. The fire stations run twenty-four seven also, but we have not had an issue where we had to have them in on a Saturday or Sunday in probably nine, eight, nine years.
I've got a couple of questions here. Where does it show you in a contract of priority? And obviously, we've never gone out to bid for this. How do we know we're getting the best service agreement? I've worked with severance agreements for forty years, okay? And I've seen them come and go. We've never bid this out. Johnson Controls, yes, is a good company. And I've had dealings with Johnson Controls in my professional life. But we need to go out because I don't think this is worth a plug. And I'm being totally honest with you. And if you ask any, any service engineer, they would tell you the same thing. That, and that's my opinion. I don't see anything in here about priority. And to me, priority, we're getting preferential service and not priority. Preferential and priority are two big different words, especially in that, it's in that line of business. And believe me, running a, helping running a large maintenance department, I know a priority and preferred is. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Abdella.
My question's been answered. Thank you.
Councilman Abdellah.
Okay, I have a question to Mr. Blackburn. In case one of the units break down and we want to replace it, do they charge us for the time they replace it or it's included in the contract?
As for a new unit?
Yes.
Um, they have used, within this last year, this last year is a little anomaly with the pandemic, everything going on. With our buildings being closed, under this current agreement, we had ended up with a lot of block hours we weren't able to use because of the pandemic and buildings being closed. We had emergency replacement of a unit that your, that this council had, had authorized. We use those block hours to pay for that and knock down the cost of the unit for, for that purpose.
So basically.
If they come out and they take. Go ahead.
So we, we get the charge if we go into installing a new unit outside of the contract?
If we have extra hours, we can do that. If those hours are not used every month. Like I said, this year is different because of everything going on and our buildings being closed. No one knew that when these, when this started that our buildings would be closed this long and we didn't, our units were not running. So I'm looking at next year. Go ahead.
Did we ever exceed the four hundred and eighty hours a year?
Um, no, it actually used to be more hours. I knocked it down back in two thousand. I think last contract, I knocked it down eight hours. And I'm looking at because this, because this past year has been so different, I'm looking at next year because you guys have authorized us buying new units and we have bought new units. Usually hours, their service hours went to repair. But now that we got newer units, they're able to perform more preventive maintenance. So as these units are getting replaced, we don't need as many hours. And next year, I may come back with a contract with less than the, less hours and is needed now. But it was hard to judge this year because everything going on.
Michael, in your.
Because of the new units, there's less maintenance involved. And with the new units. What?
In your professional opinion, you've been in the city for a long time. Do you think we can get better deal, better service for less money if we bid it out?
Could you get a better deal? Maybe. Could you get better service? You never know. You never know. I have, since I have been a supervisor, I have changed some companies that we have used in the past because I did not like their service. If for one reason I thought I didn't like, I did not like Johnson Controls service or the response time, I would go out for bids for a different company.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Muscat about the going out for bids on that. Mr. Blackburn, who dictates the specifics of these contracts? Is it something that they, they tell us what they're going to do and what they're going to do it for? Is it something that we write the contract and they agreed to it?
Typically, it's the standard contract that they have had with the city. They just change, we just change hours or the or the dollar amount. And as stated in my cover letter, it's stated because we belong to joint purchasing agencies that Johnson Controls was was a bidder in one of the group, one of the agencies that we belong with. And talking to Marianna and Mr. Jamal, that it satisfies all of the city's bidding requirements as far as the service agreement goes because they were not going to put on the agenda until they were all satisfied and everybody was satisfied with the procedures. And that's why these joint urgency agencies are out there from municipalities uses to save time and money for going out for bids for every little thing because we, and they can bid it jointly and we can get their rate because there's no guarantee that they would honor that rate to smaller cities like us. This is the rate that Johnson Controls charges nationwide for every single government entity that is in this, in the sort.
Are you referring to the hundred and twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour rate?
Anything else?
Yeah, are you referring to the one hundred and twenty-two dollars per hour rate? Mike Blackburn, are you there?
He was having trouble with his internet. It might have went down.
I, my other question was, what happens if we don't reach the four hundred and eighty hours? Do we get a rebate?
Excuse me? My, my connection wasn't that great.
Oh, Mike, you were referring to the nationwide rate. Was that the one hundred and twenty-two dollars per hour rate?
Yes.
Okay. And also, what happens if we don't, we don't reach the four hundred and eighty hours? Do we get a rebate on our?
No, they, they will carry the hours over into the following budget year. We will be carrying a few hours over this current, this current year only because the pandemic and buildings being closed had made things difficult. That's why this, this year is weird. And then when it gets towards the end of next year, we're go look at the hours spent. And we will look at if we seem to have some unused hours, we will get those carried over. And then I will come back with another contract that will have reduced hours because of the new equipment that's being bought. that will have reduced hours because of the new equipment that's being bought.
But we'll still have to pay him the contract amount, right? Even though they don't.
Yes, we have never, in the past, we have always pushed off repairs until the new budget.
Unfortunate.
Okay. Are you using those hours for preventive maintenance instead of repairs?
That was my last statement. Um, why, what kind of program do we have for ma- maintenance instead of repair? Is there a specific program we have to, uh, reg- uh, regularly inspect all of our units? Or is it just that we, when they break down is when we, uh, we, we, we pay attention to them?
Um, no, uh, we have a preventive maintenance program. We are in the middle of being that, uh, the cottonwood season's over. We are in the process now of cleaning all the fins on all the rooftop units, get all the cottonwood off. Because if the air cannot flow, it causes the air conditioning to shut down. So we are in the process of doing, doing that right now, but with a lot of units, it just takes some time to.
I give up the rest of my time.
Um.
Muscat.
Counsel Chair, uh, ju- just a little bit of observation here. Uh, you know, we're living way in the past here. We shouldn't be doing only preventative maintenance. We should be doing predictive maintenance. This is, you know, this is a standard in an industry for years and years and years. And, and we, we forgot about predictive maintenance. How have we been recording breakdowns so we can identify which unit needs the most work and constantly looking to make sure it doesn't break down? That's number one.
Yeah, brother.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, you're playing in my backyard, my sandbox here. Uh, a- a- and I know this like the back of my hand. A- and I believe we've been doing it wrong for a long time. And I, and I've said this at previous council meetings, okay? A- and, uh, it's just, it, it's, uh, it's beyond me on how this thing is done. And if there were, if, if this was done jointly by a bunch of communities, let me see those bids. What other companies bid? You're telling me they were bid, but I don't see none of it. There's nothing here on the backup. A- and, and I, I, I think this should be referred back to the administration so we can get those questions asked. I know we have a preferential, a, a, a professional engineer at DPW now. I think we should throw it in his lap. I believe that's why we hire him.
Hey, at this time, I think we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Uh, wait, Council Chair. The mayor's trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry, but I'm only calling on people that council members are addressing. This meeting's getting way too long. We're just a little over halfway. If it continues, I'm going to be asking for a twenty-minute break for everybody to get up and stretch.
Sounds good.
So at this time, we have the Building and Maintenance Superintendent Blackburn. This is his department, Johnson Controls Service Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
My.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move it to City Council, refer this back to the administration. Uh, a- a- and to, uh, look at this contract a- a- and see about, uh, uh, redoing it or bidding it out.
Then it though.
Right, I think that's what we're doing by.
No, no, we gotta refer it. Now, I'm making a motion to, to refer back.
Well, we have a motion on the table. Let's ask a man clerk. Where is she?
I'm here.
Okay, this motion was, um, voted on and it did not go.
It was defeated. So, I mean, if the building department wants to bring another agreement forward or they can, I mean, it's referred back to administration by deficient, by.
Right, that's what I thought.
So if they want to bring it forward again, then they can.
Okay, and, all right, so let's go on to the next one. And like I said, we are a little over halfway. We've been here for three hours and thirteen minutes. Um, if we continue at this rate, I'm gonna need a break, so.
Can we take ten minutes to break?
Yes.
You want a break?
Yes, let's take.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes is fine.
Well, I think fifteen is too long. Let's do five minutes.
Um. Do we want? Yeah.
Why don't we come back at ten twenty? That's seven minutes.
Yes.
Okay, Mo, you can time it.
We got it.
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, cuz we're gonna be here till midnight probably at least.
What?
There is no place after hours.
I might be at a different location when we get back.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are back from our break. Right now, we are on Reports from City Officials Letter F. Like Frank. And this is Comptroller Renewal of Property and Casualty Insurance and Workers' Compensation Insurance Contract.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the renewal of property and casualty insurance and workers, workmen's compensation with Caraco Magellan Insurance Agency, CMIA, for the period commencing July first, twenty twenty-one, and terminating July first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. The cost for this is being appropriated from fund balance. CMIA will provide casualty insurance through Midwestern Point Casualty Insurance Company. And workers' compensation will be provided through Bro- Broadspire as outlined in nine F.
The board.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any questions? I have one quick question. Um, it's written well, but I'm a little confused. Is it twenty thousand for both or is it twenty thousand each? That's just my only question. Um, comptroller? I'm asking, where is he? Oh, here he is. Hold on. There you go.
Yes, hello, it's actually twenty thousand for the, for both.
Okay.
The whole year.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have comptroller Plant Moran Pre-Audit Services.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the professional services agreement with Plant Moran, P L L C, for the pre-audit in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to be taken out of account one oh one dash two hundred dash eight one eight point zero 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 for year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two as outlined in nine G.
The board.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any further questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Hawk.
If anybody from Plant Moran or the mayor's office can explain what this is for.
Okay, I don't see Plant Moran. Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Maybe Mr. Jamal.
No.
That's for the audit.
It's for the audit?
It's pre-audit.
Pre-audit, yeah.
Yeah. All right, it's pre-audit.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Again, we have comptroller transfer of funds from the general government pension.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the transfer of funds in the amount of one million, three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars from general government one oh one dash two hundred dash seven one eight point zero 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 to Comerica General Government Pension Account. In addition, approve the transfer of funds in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars from contractual services five ninety-two dash five thirty-seven, eight one eight point zero zero to Comerica General Government Pension Account as outlined in nine H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, I have comptroller transfer of funds for Act Three Forty-Five Pension.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
That, I moved it to Dearborn Heights City Council approve the transfer of funds in the amount of four million, six hundred and ninety-four dollars, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars from Three Forty-Five Pension one oh one dash two hundred dash seven se- seven twenty-two point zero 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 to the Comerica Act Three Forty-Five Pension Account. In addition, approve the transfer of funds in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the Three Forty-Five Expenditure one oh one dash two hundred dash seven two two point zero zero two to Comerica Three Forty-Five Pension Account per administrator as outlined in nine I.
Support.
Board.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Uh, I just had a question. The amounts seem to be different from the paperwork that we received. Uh, in the paperwork, it has four million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. But then on the motion, it's four, six, nine, four, four, six, four, which is two different numbers. I need a clarification of that from, uh, comptroller, please.
Comptroller, would you like to answer that?
Look which, uh, form are we looking?
Nine I. So if you look at the motion.
Yeah.
There's an amount on there. But then if you look at, uh, that'd be the third page and it says funding objective towards the top, contributions. And then if you look at the fiscal year, you go down the net city contribution, the amount for two thousand and, um, it's, well, on mine, it's not legible, but it's a different number.
Around thirteen thousand difference.
Uh, I know that there's the one that's from May twenty-second and then the one that's closest to, uh, our, our, uh, request is from June the first. So that should be the accurate, it should be accurate in C six four.
Well, the, the one from May twenty, uh, May twenty-second is four, six, eight, one, four, six, four. In your email.
Six four. Okay. Okay, I'd, I'd have to take a look at why there's a difference there, I guess.
Then we refer this back. We have time?
We, we can amend it.
You wanna amend it? Or which numbers are correct?
I, I was, uh, this is something I worked on with person Jamal. Can we put them under line as well?
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Councilman Dave, uh, uh, wh- what's the, what's the amended amount read?
You're talking about, uh, motion? And the motion is four million?
No, the supportive, the supportive, the supportive one from, uh.
There's a letter from the comptroller's offer, office on May twenty-second. And that amount on there is different from the one on the motion. That amount is four, six, eight, one, four, six, four. But on the motion, four, six, nine.
Four, five, seven.
Four, six, eight, one, four, four, six, four.
I have four, five, seven, that last the three digits.
Yeah, four, five, seven is on the third, uh, that'd be the fourth page. On the third page, there was a letter from May twenty-second, which says another amount. Uh, look, I, I just need, I just, it should all be clear in the same amount, that's all.
Yeah.
I, I believe, I, I mean, I might have been typing it in and I typed it, you know, we were kind of on a crunch. So that might have been it, but I can double check the exact amounts.
The other option, i- i- if we are in a time crunch, we could approve the lower amount subject to approval by, let's see, wh- what is the deadline for this?
There is no deadline.
If there's no deadline, then I, I presume suggested we get the corrected numbers, then we re-vote on it at the next meeting.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Councilman Abdul Hawk.
Okay, I'd like to share with you something. More than six weeks ago, I sent request for information from the treasurer, who is the treasurer of the pension board. And some of this information, I don't know what they did, was it at the pension board? I haven't received any information whatsoever from the board regarding my questions. And I feel like they are giving us the runaround. They are not going, you know, being, uh, forthcoming with answers to the question I asked. Uh, I don't know what's included in this, the three million, three, uh, three, three million, zero, three, two, seven, eight, eight. And the employer, one, six, four, eight, six, seven, nine, that's the city con- employer contribution and the amortization. I don't know what's included in those number. I recommend that, I don't wanna be harsh. I recommend we table this until we get the answer. Because they have to respect the city council, they have to be forthcoming with the information. Otherwise, you know, we are not going to get to the bottom of anything about this issue. So I recommend that we table this issue.
Counsel Chair.
We've got Chief Myers here. Go ahead, please.
Ma'am, uh, I'm gonna speak in as the trustee for the Act Three Forty-Five, uh, to clarify. Uh, the email request from the councilman was, uh, reviewed, provided to legal counsel. And a, an official FOIA return was supplied to the councilman per his request. If it wasn't the answers he was looking for, um, that is not what FOIA does. FOIA provides the documents that are allowed and that are requested. And we provided everything within our legal obligation, uh, to the councilman that he requested. So as the trustee of the board, I, uh, I respectfully disagree with the allegation that, uh, the board is somehow trying to, uh, circumvent or hide information from this council. He is welcome to attend any meeting, cuz they're public meetings, the third Wednesday of every month at four fifteen. So, uh, uh, as the trustee, um, I respectfully disagree with those comments made by, uh, Councilman Abdul Hawk.
Why do we need to?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Hawk.
With my respect to the chief, I haven't received anything whatsoever from this board or from their council. So with my respect to him, I haven't received anything, so that's what, where I am standing right now. I have no choice but to ask either he provide this information or we table this. Because when we ask for information, we don't ask for it just for fun.
Okay, I think we agreed to send it back because the numbers are incorrect anyways.
We have, uh, corporate council is raising his hand. He's been waving. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I understand. Um, wait a minute, I'm gonna ask the clerk first real quick. Well, all right, I'll ask corporate council. What would you suggest we do to streamline this?
I would suggest that you move to refer the specific item back to the administration to correct the figures. And with respect to Mr. or Councilman of the Hawks matter, you should bring it to the council as a body, uh, put it onto the agenda. And then maybe some official action can be taken and then directed over to the, uh, to the pension board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so go ahead. Who wants to make the motion?
Counsel Chair, I made, I believe I made the original motion.
Okay, go ahead, please, Councilman Muscat.
Uh, but before I do that, I'd like to know why we have the FOIA anything, since it's dealing with taxpayer money. That's number one. But I'll make the motion, uh, that the Dearborn Heights City Council refer this back to the administration for the proper, uh, information requested.
Thank you. Do I get a mo- second?
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun?
Yep.
Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have comptroller for the Community and Cultural Relations Commission Account.
Somebody else, please.
Mad- Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
All right, just to make sure I'm getting the right one here.
It should be, uh, J.
J, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we were on I, that was Act Three Forty-Five.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the opening of a cash account, one zero one dash zero 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 dash zero zero one, period zero zero four, for the Dearborn Heights Community Cultural Relations Commission is outlined in item nine J.
Support.
Support.
For my Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Adam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Um, you know, and, and I'm sorry, I, I don't know if this is a good question or not, but I, I am sincere when I ask, are all commissions, do other commissions have cash, uh, accounts similar to the one that we're opening up with? other commissions have cash, uh, accounts similar to the one that we're opening up with?
I do believe the Watershed Commission is an escrow account.
Okay.
And it's not part of the general fund, and that would be my question too, is why are we doing it this way instead of an escrow account?
So I, I, I do believe, you know, some of the commission members had some concerns. Um, and so I just, and they were asking for everything to be equal, I don't know what's going on, I don't know, you know, the details of it, but if uh, you know, respected to Mrs. Hicks, uh, can speak on this, Madam Treasurer can speak on this, that would be great.
It shows that the Controller is the one that submitted this, would you like to speak upon it?
Yeah.
Or, or the Controller.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I submitted it because I opened up the GL account after we discussed it and uh, but Mariana, you would probably want to ask Mariana.
Okay.
Who was involved in that as well, thank you.
All right, go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone, uh, first of all, I would like to, uh, point out that Mr. Jamal has been trying to rejoin the meeting for some time. He's on the phone with me right now, so if someone could let him in, he is actually the best person to answer this question.
You know, he just popped up here, he wasn't, he must, let's let him in, whoops, Smerry let him in.
I just let him in, I, I apologize, he was there, he just popped up.
Yeah, he just popped up within a second, are you saying him?
Thank you, uh, so he does hang up and he can proceed with the answer, uh, yes, so the Watershed Commission is the only one that has ever done fundraising in the past, they have never done extensive amounts of fundraising. We do believe the cultural, uh, and Community and Cultural Commission will be using their funds, uh, more frequently, and not only that, but we do want to make sure that those accounts are, to a certain extent, restricted, and we always have an appropriate amount of money that they do have, so we do have a bank account and a GL account where we're going to be tracking those funds at all times, again, in order to be transparent with each one of our accounts, um.
Well, my, my question is, and I'm so sorry to cut you off, Mariana, thank you so much for that, but my question is, I mean, you know, just speaking on what, you know, Leslie and Latani have spoken, they've asked that if they're going to be able to, you know, can they use some of that money so that they can pay for things, or is that going to be put in an account, is it going to be accessible for them? Uh, or myself was on the commission, so I mean, maybe, uh.
Again, so every fund available in the city has to follow the same process, which was presented to council to file notes and, uh, you know, review in item eight I. That once again shows you what we do have on our charter, that specifies what the procedures are in order to use those funds. They do need to come to city council, get approval with the same limitations that every other department head has. There is no difference between the commissions and the department heads, they all have to follow the same charter.
Amazing.
That's, that's the only thing that we wanted to point out, but no, there was no sort of difference for one commission to another, they, everyone in the city follows the same rules.
Perfect.
Hey, I got Corporate Counsel, I think he wants to say something.
Uh, very briefly, yes, all these expenditures of this commission, unless they are otherwise authorized, have to come through this body, these are city funds. It's the same thing for, say, the Act seventy-eight commission in terms of things for testing, or the Civil Service Commission. E- even though they've raised the money, the money still belongs to the city and it needs to end up going through the appropriate channels, thank you.
Thank you, and then we have Hassan Jamal, finally you joined us.
Okay, thank you, I, I don't know what happened, I, I, I guess I've been cut off twice, I, I, I don't believe it's you, but some way this the first time happens to me, anyway, uh, it just, let's, you know, I, I need a minute, please. Uh, with your permission, I need a minute, because this is, this has created a commotion. Uh, uh, you know, in, in trying to swim in a cup of coffee for issue, it's actually doesn't exist. This has started way back when we tried to align all the accounts with the city and separate the, 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 the restricted fund from non-restricted fund, or what we call it in accounting, you know, designated fund, not the designated fund, or unassigned fund to assigned fund. So it happened that during that, during that, I put together with the finance team a procedure, how what, how we do business in the city for you, but you have that. I explained that, you know, I supported that with the uh, divisions, you know, of the charter, how we process accounting, you know, and how we process our money in the city and we're supposed to do it, I don't care whether it was, was done before or not. I, I wanted to make sure we are in compliance with the charter and the Treasury Department Charter of Accounting, so we've been discussing that since, since March. So the, the plan to open accounts for restricted funds, it's been on your agenda for a while. It happens that, you know, the, the commissions, eh, in the small accounts like the, like the tree fund, like all this, we've been in discussion and they like Watershed Fund, we've been in a discussion for a while about this. So for anybody who think that this is, was targeting a specific commission, please take it from me. I am an advocate of justice for all, I am an advocate you know, for equity for all. So, so, uh, I'm sorry to speak about this, but I need to assure everybody that this, this particular thing, you know, like Lisa tried to put this, whatever, it's never been an issue. Uh, uh, you know, this is started by me, by Mariana, and directed by the mayor to straight up all this account. One time, you are the chair, please remember when you asked for the tree fund balance, and it took a while, you know, for you to know, we wanted to segregate those funds, so this has been on the plate for a while. Let's just stop there, this particular, this particular motion was put by the Treasurer, by the Controller. I guess my way, this is not needed a council approval at all. We can open, we can open, you know, a GL account without your approval. The only approval we need from you accounting wise, and I know, I know your chair, you know that. This isn't just something, you know, I, I didn't agree with, but I said, there's no harm. So if you have an issue with this, I am asking you to take this out, we don't need your approval to open a GL account. So there is a GL account for the watershed.
All right, you know.
The GL account for the watershed before a while, we track the money coming by a GL account for revenue. Now, we track also the expenditure by GL. Now, the problem I'm telling you, and I wanted to be really, really, you know, aware of, is that every penny right now is in the general fund, meaning, meaning the money we receive from the water fund, or, I mean, from the watershed fund, it's been used to pay your, to pay, you know, part of your, part of your salary council people, because it's paid from that pool of fund. We're trying to segregate those particular one, so we can be transparent with you. The first thing, you know, you, you and the past, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Councilor Chair, I think the point has been made, point of order.
I, I understand.
The point has been made.
Okay, so, so.
At, at this time, we have got Controller wants to cha- say something.
Thank you. Before he said the last thing, that's what I was going to say, uh, we basically, the people that advocated for putting it on the agenda were, was because of transparency. So this was brought up a couple of council meetings ago, so we figured, yeah, let's let you know, uh, that, you know, we're going to do this and open up a GL account. A- and so this way you can say, yeah, it was done, the request was done, we just wanted everybody to know that we were proactive and we took care of this.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much, at this time, I think we should just vote on it.
Councilor Chair, I just want to clarify something, the Watershed Stewart Commission has been brought up a lot.
Okay.
That's why I tell you how, how, how our, uh, money situation works. All funds raised by the Watershed Stewart Commission are deposited into the, uh, Treasurer's office and put into the general general account, and, uh, any monies that we want to take out of our balance that we have, we have to submit a check request, and then the check is, uh, submitted by the Controller. Since we have no access to the account whatsoever, uh, on our own, it's all regulated. And, uh, it's not like we have access to any, any, tomorrow morning I can go take out fifty bucks out of my bank account or anything like that.
Thank you, at this time, let's vote on this.
Thank you.
Um, this is nine J, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, next we have Corporation Council Miyaki, Further Extension of Local State of Emergency.
Madam Chair.
Who is this?
Council.
Constant.
Oh, come, Councilman Constant, I'm sorry, your screen didn't light up like it normally does, go ahead, please.
Uh, let me find it here. Dearborn Heights City Council, consent to the further extension, uh, until December thirty-first twenty twenty-one, if necessary, of the local state of emergency stemming from uh, Mayor Bill Bosse's Declaration of Local State of Emergency regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic and the need to hinder it through the continued use of virtual meetings as outlined in nine K.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I, I, I think this is, uh, mute, uh, the governor has lifted all restrictions, there's no restrictions on anything. I think we need to start going back to live city council meetings.
I agree.
This is, we, we need to start, uh, conducting business, uh, uh, normally here. Uh, the whole state, the whole state is doing that.
Can we all agree to just vote on this?
Yes.
Councilman Abdul Hawk, do you have a quick question?
Yeah, quick question, how long before the city council room is done?
It's done, I mean, we can go back to it now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of closing to?
Madam Chair, the mayor's got a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't see that.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Wish you guys would have muted me a long time ago, I could have saved half an hour to an hour of this meeting, but anyway, that's another topic. Uh, with, with that, uh, you know, with Wayne County, they extended it till December, so, uh, if you see the letter behind, uh, the motion, Wayne County did extend it, so if you, if you look at, uh, like, okay, was it page three? You, you'll see that, so on the other note with our council, uh, the council chambers, we, we have, uh, three bidders. We, it's not done yet, so if we were to go back to the council room, we would have to do this, the social distance, I mean, everybody has to be masked up, obviously, or you can't.
All restrictions have been lifted.
All restrictions are lifted.
Yeah, but if you haven't had the vaccine, do you want to be sitting next to somebody who's not been vaccinated? I mean, that's, that's the other thing, I, I, I know a lot of people in the city hall are not comfortable of. I mean, it, it's up to you guys, you guys are the council, but if you're going to risk our residents and other employees.
So is there a way we can go hybrid, where we're still sitting in there, half are allowed, the other half are watching it via Zoom? I know that's how universities are doing it, I believe, uh, the city of Dearborn is doing it, Westland is doing it hybrid, um, and, and it just. But you're the mayor, you're the administration.
Well, we can do, again, you know, my, my, my objectives is the safety of our residents and employees, and, uh, right now with the council room, it's not, it's not prep, not to go back to the meetings unless you guys can find another venue. I mean, I know school boards, uh, are meeting and they still have, uh, plexiglass in between.
Nothing wrong with the, with the library. And, and I just want to add just one more thing, I'm so sorry to, to add on to this, I mean, we just attended the senior event. A bunch of our senior citizens were there, I've been attending a bunch of other events. Um, I, I think I'd like to say the normal things are coming back and, and they're really, people are accepting of it. I'm, I've walked into Kroger seeing Councilman Abdulhass face number one on, on the cart, believe it or not, it's a new photo, by the way, in case anyone's wondering. Um, but I want you to know, I walked in there and I was wearing a mask and nobody was wearing a mask, and I said, oh my God, nobody's wearing a mask, why am I wearing my mask, like, I, I, I just, I just, you know, I feel like things are going back to being normal. Uh, I think we need to kind of move in that direction as well, I believe I walked into city hall today and I believe I didn't see everybody wearing masks, so I was excited to be able to see everybody's faces today. I'll use the rest of my time, Madam Chair, thank you.
If you look at the, the report, we still have COVID, uh, uh, cases. So if you look at the report that, uh, my emergency manager that sends out, we're still seeing five, seven, uh, cases a day, so. I, I don't know.
We, we declared zero, I believe, last week, Mayor, and I'm not trying to trump you, I just want you to know, it was actually very exciting, it was the first time we seen zero.
Yeah.
I believe Dearborn only had one, was nice. And I also just want to leave one last thing, Madam Chair, definitely my concern for the residents and what the mayor is saying is absolutely correct, we should be, you know, putting safety first. But I think, eh, you know, with the way things are happening today, I think Wall Street just said you have to come back to the building, you have to come back to, uh, you know, back to the office. Um, and I'm, 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 you'll do rest of my time again.
Is Councilman Constant?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think we, uh, just vote, and if we can go back sooner, that's the council, council's decision, uh, but we have it, if, if necessary and if needed, the city attorney spent time on it and, um, I think we voted and extended as Wayne County did, and then we, if we can get back in the, uh, council chambers, uh, uh, sooner, great. Thank you.
Hey, Councilman Abdullah.
Uh, what I would suggest, one or two things, either we extend, if we do extend this thing, definitely not until December thirty-first, I think it's way too long at this particular point. So we should do it on a, maybe month by month basis reassess this, so maybe for another forty-five days, possibly we can stay in Zoom, but there's another option that I personally like. I've watched the parliament in Lebanon on TV, and we could use some very similar to that, and, and no, don't follow their politics, but this, we could use something very similar to that at Crestwood High School, we could use the stage, if they allow us, we could use the stage for us council members to sit there, then the audience can sit in the auditorium, and that fits, I don't know exactly how many Councilman Mobidun's the youngest out of all of us that's been there, but I assume it's, I don't know, three, four, five, six hundred people. And I know that, I know not that many people want to come and see us, so we could very easily spread it six seats apart, or whatever it is apart. It's still close to city hall where people can still come in.
I like that idea, you know, you're a wise man.
I want to Fortson.
Go ahead, please.
I already hear that.
Sorry for your luck. Uh, Councilor Chair.
Councilman, I've already called on Chief of Staff.
I'm hearing a quiet lull there.
Thank you, uh, just two issues here that I see if we do go back to in-person, one is that some announcements have gone out for some of our commissions that would be virtual, so I would like to ask Mr. Miyaki, how would that affect our commissions if we do vote no on the virtual extension? Uh, and if, if it's not possible for them to meet virtually, then I would like to definitely ask for an extension for at least forty-five days in order to, uh, communicate back to those commissions and make sure that they start coming back in person as well. Number two, uh, although I like the idea of using a different venue, this becomes an issue with our recordings and having the microphones available so that we can actually hear, uh, the comments that are going on during the meetings. So there's a lot of technical issues that have to do with that, not just finding a place and going there and that fits people, is this meetings also have to be recorded? So just keep those two items in mind.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat.
Yeah, um, I, I was going to say, we can make them, you know, uh, we have a motion on the floor, but then we can amend this motion to do forty-five days, as Councilman Dave Abdallah suggested, I think that was a great idea. We can do that.
Okay, well, we, we need to realize, even if this is done for city hall, city council chambers are city council, and we could still open up, even if they do this for city hall. I've done some research, and I do plan on opening the council chambers up. And if people don't want to come, that's fine, I respect that, but we need to start getting back to a normal routine. Most of our residents do not like the Zoom meetings, as you can see, we freeze up and we've had trouble tonight, internet is unpredictable. So, you know.
Well, we have a motion.
And I, I amended to extend it for forty-five days.
We've got a motion on the table, we need, let me ask the clerk to make sure, but we have to vote on that first, that's some things we've had issues with in the past. No.
We can.
Councilman Constant can amend it to, um, do it for forty-five days. Clerk Prashavis was here. He used to stop us from doing that. That's why I was checking with you.
For forty-five days.
Are we?
As, uh, as discussed.
Thank you, Councilman Constant.
Support.
Support by Council Muscat, Constant, Corporate Council Miyaki.
Yeah, um, I would suggest a date certain of forty-five days of, it, it just doesn't give you till like the end of the month or something along those lines. Just to make sure it's clear. You can always end up not going for the full amount, like August thirty-first, perhaps.
August thirty-first till August thirty-first. So moved.
Okay. Support by Councilman Muscat. Let's take a vote. All them, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, Purchase and Payment of IT Equipment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Move the Dearborn High City Council through the purchase of Comcast internet and two firewalls to establish a new line between fire headquarters and station number one, as recommended by the Dearborn IT. The cost of the firewalls is three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars to be paid from capital outlay upon receipt and cost of Comcast internet is two hundred nine, that was a ninety-five cents a month to be paid from the utilities account as outlined in nine L.
Support. Support.
By Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes.
Did we not years ago pay a company to wire up our city and we paid a lot of money to do that? To be able to communicate better? Whatever happened to that? And why don't we hold these companies responsible for the jobs that they fail to do?
Amen.
I don't have the answer.
I mean, this is two hundred and nine dollars a month and that's actually cheaper than my whole, my whole, my whole thing. But, uh, uh, you know, we, we, we spent money that we, we allocated even more money with change orders because all I, we have to drill a hole through a thicker piece of, of brick. Uh, you know, it, it was a fiasco and I, I didn't vote for it. And we need to hold these people responsible. We can't communicate like we did. Okay? But there's a, you know, I read it. I don't know if it's been seconded. We can vote on it. We need to have somebody look into that. Uh, maybe our engineer can look into that.
Yes, good idea.
Madam Chair, we have a motion on the table. There was seconds.
Do we have a second on it?
A support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Now, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. I'm sorry. Let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Uh, Councilor Chair Malinowski Maxwell? Yes. Councilman Abdellah Hawk?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, Agreement with Unions Regarding PBGC Rate.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the memos of agreement with POAM, COAM in IAFF that effective July first, two thousand twenty-one, in place of the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation. Immediate rate, the pension board will utilize a new rate of interest that is similar, eh, I'm sorry, that is as similar as possible to the previously utilized PBGC immediate rate, which new rate of interest will be calculated and provided by the retirement systems actuary consistent with PBGC methodology previously used. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the memos of agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in item nine F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdellah Hawk?
If, uh, the director of Human Resources would be kind to explain this for us and for the public, so they know what this is about.
He already did that.
We did that earlier, Councilman.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
Long day.
I know. Well, I feel sorry for all the directors. They have to come in early tomorrow. So at this time, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, Agreement with Nyhart for interim GASB seventy-five Report.
Yeah, Council Chair.
Council Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement with Nyhart Company Inc., in the amount of four thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars to provide an interim GASB seventy-five report. In addition, authorize the mayor clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine N.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Library Director McCaffrey, Budget Agreement for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the budget amendment to the library budget salary page for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two as outlined in nine O. Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, Purchase and Payment of a Whole and Safe. I hope I'm saying that right.
Top.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Okay. Uh, I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the per, per, purchase and payment of one Hellon safe in the amount of two thousand three hundred dollars with a cost to be paid from the state forfeiture account. This includes installation and removal and disposal of the old safe as outlined in nine P.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, Purchase and Payment of Trailer.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of a trailer from DR Trailer in amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars with the cost to be paid out of capital outlay upon receipt as outlined in item nine Q.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under ordinances and resolutions, we have Jennifer Hill, Seacross Wardle, First Reading of Proposed Ordinance H dash two one dash zero four, Zoning Ordinance Agreement for two four zero four five Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council move that proposed ordinance H dash twenty-one oh four, an ordinance to amend the city code, blah, blah, blah. City of Dearborn Heights amend the zoning map and district boundaries established under section thirty-six dash fifty-two to reclassify a certain property as here and after described to be considered red for the first time as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Jennifer Hill with Seacross Wardle, First Reading of Proposed Ordinance H dash two one dash zero five, Zoning Ordinance Amendment for seven zero one eight Mayburn.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council move that the proposed ordinance number H dash two one dash zero five, an ordinance to amend the city code, chapter thirty-six, zoning chapter of the city of Dearborn Heights to amend the zoning map and district boundaries established under section thirty-six dash fifty-two to reclassify certain properties here, I'm sorry, as here and after described be considered red for the first time as outlined in item eleven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, Resolution for Cadet Program.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt a resolution for a cadet program as follows, as outlined in eleven C. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights hereby authorizes the fire chief to establish and maintain a cadet program within the fire department comprised of individuals who are the grade level of eleven to twelve at their high school.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
Yeah, and if, 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 uh, you know, so I, I heard about this. I, uh, spoke with, uh, I believe, uh, our, our Phil Hall and our Chief Brogan. This is an amazing program. I love this idea. And if, if the chief would just kind of talk about this a little bit. I know we're running a little late, but I just want everybody so that the residents know about this. It's a really, really amazing program. If the chief is here. If not, no big deal.
I'm just getting unmuted. Uh, sure. Thank you. It was, um, this, this is a program where, where we get into our local high schools and we're gonna have, uh, it's a two-year program in conjunction with, uh, Schoolcraft and, and other, um, uh, colleges that might offer the same thing. But it's a dual enrollment with the high school. And so the student is actually leaving the high school, going to Schoolcraft College where they'll be taking classes to get them the fire, fire academy, which is fire one and two, and also they'll get their basic EMT. You can't test to become a basic EMT to be licensed until they're eighteen. But by the time that they graduate, they'll be, uh, eligible to take those tests if they pass everything. And then along with that, they need to do some time in a fire station. And so they'll, they'll be, they'll be spending time with, uh, with the Dearborn Heights Fire Department. And so this will be for local kids, getting to see what it's like to be a Dearborn Heights firefighter. And, um, and we're starting off kind of small with just, with just a small number and, and we'll hope that this is a program that will grow because, uh, just like many other fields, it's hard to find, uh, good candidates. And this would have them graduate with their fire one and two and their basic EMT and they'd only need to get their paramedic to then be fully qualified to work for the Dearborn Heights Fire Department.
Thank you.
How many, how many are you starting out with, chief?
Well, right now, we, we have, we have one student approach us who's, uh, from Annapolis High School. He's already signed up with Schoolcraft and they were gonna set him up with Westland, who has his program already up and running. And, um, and they reached out to us and we said, no, we, we want to have our local kids here with us. So.
I love that. Love it. Good deal. Seriously, it's awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Abdellah Hawk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, uh, Chief Brogan. This is a great program. I hope we can extend that to our police department too.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on it? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have new business. Under this, we have business license renewals for three forty-two Bar and Grill located at three nine three two Pelham. Also Denny's Gin Mill located at four nine zero one South Telegraph and Mickey Cooper Auto Sales Limited Liability Company located at two three two two zero Van Born.
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for three four two Bar and Grill at three nine three two Pelham. Denny's Gin Mill at four nine zero one South Telegraph and Mickey Cooper's Auto Sales LLC at two three two two zero Van Born as outlined in thirteen A. Support.
Support by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Permanent Traffic Control Device, T dash two eight three, Place Two No Left Turn Signals on Both Sides of the West and East Driveways at Dearborn Fresh Market located at two six eight one one Ford Road.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun?
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the permanent traffic control device, T dash two eight three, uh, and place two no left turn signs on both sides of west and east driveways at the Dearborn Fresh Market at two six eight one one Ford Road as outlined in thirteen B.
Support.
Support.
Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we are going to members of public. This is for public comment. For all of the sections today, because we've went so late, um, I will be limiting it to three minutes. Madam clerk will announce when fifteen seconds is left and then she will mute you at three minutes automatically. Um, this at time is for comments from council members. Go ahead, um.
For council members?
Yeah, that's, yes, at the council table, council members. Then we go to public announcements and then, I'm sorry, public announcements and the public comments. Now we have council members. We have Councilman Wensel. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, one thing, were we supposed to hear from GFL today?
I think he left because we took too long.
Okay. Oh, that's unfortunate because that's, uh, anyway, um, besides the, uh, hot topic of GFL, uh, we've had a lot of complaints about, uh, the ordinances. Um, and this, this, this question goes to the mayor. Um, is our problem with the ordinance, uh, enforcing it? Or we, do we need more ordinance officers? What's, what's the, uh, what's, what's the resolution to these ordinance problems with the, the blade and the, uh, the grass and people not, not obeying by the, the citations they get?
Well, for your first comment with, uh, GFL, I believe there's still, we can get ahold of them. They're waiting for us. So, and Mr. Miyaki, before we go down here, he wants to make a statement, the statement that actually went to GFL. Uh, I, well, for the, for the ordinance, we, uh, we actually, uh, they're doing everything that they can. They're actually going around the city and, uh, uh, from one side of the city to the other. So, Miss, uh, Director Dishum is, I, I think he's on. Is he still online? He can probably shed a little bit more light on how much enforcement that they're actually doing. Get somebody unmute, Mr. Dishum.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Yeah, uh, Tom, we're, Councilman Wensel, we're, we're working very diligently. We're short-staffed. We're having some technical issues. We have our old tablets that, um, are still waiting. We have new tablets, uh, in, in the pipe that are ready to be deployed. Uh, waiting on Dearborn IT for that. Um, we're, we're short manpower as usual. Uh, we're working very diligently. Um, we're issuing a fair number of tickets. We're trying to get on top of the grass. Um, again, I, I ask the citizens to, uh, to make sure you're cutting your grass and keep, keep the weeds at bay. A lot of these are basic, uh, property maintenance issues that, um, we can't seem to get citizens to comply with. Uh, the, uh, as you can see, there's a bill on the agenda tonight for Eager Beaver, uh, for a bunch of cuts that they've done within the city limits. In a perfect world, there would be none of those. Everybody would be cutting their grass and in compliance. But, uh, we're out there in force, uh, working, uh, the part-time ordinance officers as much as I can. Um, so yeah, we're, we're trying to do the best we can. We're up against it. So, uh, be, be helpful if the citizens would, uh, residents and the businesses alike would help us out and, uh, do their part. Be patient. We're, we're working hard, as hard as we can.
Do we need more officers or do we need to hire more contractors? Or are we good where we're at?
Um, I could, that's a, that's a loaded question. I'm short right now. Uh, I've only got two or three, two full-time, uh, animal control officers slash ordinance officers. I got one in training. Uh, HR director just posted a, a full-time job, uh, for me. We've been wait, waiting on, uh, to get the, uh, the internal applicants that we had through finally. So I'm short, uh, one full-timer for sure, one's in training. And then I have, uh, two part-time guys right now. I'm supposed to have another day. Uh, not sure what happened. That was gonna be my typical guy. Uh, but I could use probably one more or two more part-timers. So doing the best we can with what we got, sir.
You're doing a good job, but I know, but it's a lot of complaints and a lot of violations. You guys are doing what you can, I'm sure.
Yeah, we, we're issuing, uh, quite a few tickets. Actually, they've been, they've been coming through. So, uh, if you have any issues, you can reach out to me. Uh, if you know anybody that has issues, you can tell them to call or send an email, uh, three one three seven M one three four seven eight or ordinance@ci.dearbornhighs.com, mi.us.
My, my, my last question was, do we, you think we need to hire more grass-cutting contractors or are, are we good where we're at?
Um, I think right now we're good. Um, we have actually, uh, both contractors are working. We have the ones that, the one that does the city cuts, the city-owned properties, and then the one that does the, uh, private ones. uh, private ones that we tag and they they're not in compliance, so um, I think that we're we're good as far as that goes.
All right, all right, thank you, Director.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next, I have Councilman Abdul Hawk.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have one issue on the south end, uh, some resident called me about the rats and mice. And I know we are short in the ordinance department. I want to ask if we can, as city, hire some private companies, some private contractors to go around and see if they can treat uh, this problem or reduce it. That would be good for our city and until we have enough officers uh, to to do this uh, kind of treatment, because lots of people are complaining on the south end because of this problem. I hope the administration will think about it and uh, if we can hire somebody, that will be great. Uh, after all these uh, issues, I would like to ask our mayor to give us the good news about how much money the city have received from the federal government, if he would be kind enough to announce it to all of us in the city.
Thank you, Councilor Abdul Ha. Um, I was actually, we actually put on an agenda, I mean, we wanted to put on an agenda, but obviously it wasn't important enough to put on an agenda for today. Uh, but we are getting uh, twelve, we we we're getting money wired as we speak, uh, I don't know if it hit that count yet, twelve million dollars. And hopefully, uh, if it didn't hit today, it'll hit tomorrow, uh, our account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep, Councilman Baydun?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and you know what, uh, you know, week over, week after week, I feel like we've been getting on here and I understand what's happening with, you know, grass not being cut, and believe it or not, I I call our uh, ordinance director Bill maybe two, three times a week, I'm sure he's probably sick of me. Uh, but I want you to know, these guys are working tirelessly, they're 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 really going out, they're doing the work. I just want everybody to kind of keep in mind, we have a new director, um, we're, they're short-staffed and it's the summer, it's been raining, tends to rain a lot, I'm the type of guy that loves it when it rains, because my grass grows, but what else grows with that is the weeds and everything else. So we just, you know, I know it's frustrating, I know we're all really frustrated, but we also have to keep in mind that these guys are, there's the amount of stress that they're taking in with being short-staffed and being new and having their tablets down. I just kind of wanted to recognize them and their department and and really thank them for what they're doing, because I know they're, at least from me alone. I'm calling the, you know, the director four or five times a week and I'm telling him, hey, I got this, I got that, I got this, and they're going out there. So I can only imagine residents, other council members, the administration, and just going out and seeing what they see. Uh, that's for the first part, the second thing is, uh, Madam Chair. I also want to ask my colleagues here today that, uh, hopefully we can go back to in-person. I actually love the idea that Councilman Dave Abdullah uh, came up with. And uh, you know, being able to, you know, I understand that we have to look at the safety of our residents, but I also want us to kind of get back to uh, just having things going back to normal day-to-day. Uh, my basement is very cold and I'm ready to be able to just have shoes on in the house as well. So thank you so much for that, I yield the rest of my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. Both myself and Councilman Abdullah and now Councilman Baydun have offices on Ford Road and you can hear the cars speeding by, there's been accidents, there is a couple accidents with speeders where vehicles were overturned. Um, they're speeding around in the neighborhood where I go for a walk-through. I know the police department has been writing a lot of tickets, thank you, but rev- residents can remember, it's uh, uh, the uh, lot of homes, lot of young children running around. A straight pipe on your motorcycle or car is not a muffler and that loud noise disturbs a lot of people in the peacefulness of the city. And then I want uh, everyone to remember also about uh, people who have pets uh, shooting off fireworks, we're coming up to the Fourth of July, so uh, keep your neighbors in mind, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Muscat.
Uh, number one, uh, we do have the GFL guy, Representative Sam Kamagino is on on and uh, we can maybe ask him uh, or let him speak for a minute, but in the meantime, um, uh, you know, we spent a lot of time talking here tonight. And with uh, with the exception of Dave Abdullah, Councilman Dave Abdullah's question about the houses with the contracts coming into them late, all these other questions could have been easily have answered by calling department ads. And 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 I want to make that, you know, and we we can make a statement at the end to let people know that you've done your due diligence. That's second, plus the, on Ford Road, there's uh, construction going on again. I don't know what's being built and from my understanding, I've been told there's gonna be some drive-throughs there. I don't want any more drive-throughs on Ford Road, we got a mess going on now and we're gonna want more. I don't know who's approving them, I'd like to know, I don't know if it's supposed to come before city council, but um, I I'd sure like to know how we can get rid of these uh, drive-throughs, we just, it's too much congestion. Uh, people are making turns and they really don't care about no left turns or no right turns, they couldn't care less. And someone's going to get killed, and when someone gets killed, it's on us, let's remember that. So, but let's uh, uh, again, council chair, if G uh, GFL uh, manager is here and if you could kindly let him speak for a minute, I'd appreciate it.
Right, I've already unmuted him, I was waiting for you to finish.
Thank you.
On GFL, go ahead, please.
Mister, Madam Chair? Mr. Miyake has to go first, Miss, Madam Chair.
Right, it will, it it will be helpful to set the stage to speak. Um, last week I sent a letter, uh, letter, it's not too long, I will read it. Uh, it concerned the breach of and default under the contract with the city of Dearborn Heights, it was sent to two representatives of GFL, including Mr. uh, Cara Mango, who is here today. And this is what the letter basically said. Uh, I represent the city of Dearborn Heights, this letter is to formally notify your company that the city considers your company to be in and to continue to be in breach of contract uh, that it has with the city, specifically, your company has failed to timely provide services required by the contract with respect to residential solid waste auto side collection and disposal, yard waste, curb side collection and disposal, and auto side recycling. Further, these breaches of the contract have been occurring on an ongoing basis involving these collections throughout the city. While Mr. Cara Mango is currently scheduled to meet with Mayor Bazey, Emergency Manager Gavin, me and potentially other city representatives on Tuesday morning, your company has also failed to diligently cure its ongoing breaches of the contract in an expeditious manner. Hence, this letter is to further formally notify your company that the city considers your company to be in default under the contract. The city cannot and will not tolerate your company's continuing breaches of the contract and default under the contract. At a minimum, the city will pursue all possible deductions from your company's compensation for its non-performance pursuant to section four E of the contract. Still, the city may pursue additional forms of contractual, legal, and equitable relief consistent with its rights under the contract and otherwise. Without limitation, this may include um, employing other firms to perform uh, contractual services that your company is supposed to perform but has failed to perform as required by the contract. Of course, any such firm would be compensated out of the money that would otherwise be paid to your firm, moreover, the city may simply decide to terminate the contract with your company. Whatever the case, it will not be enough for your company to merely cure its breaches of the contract and to remedy its default under the contract in a diligent and expeditious manner. Instead, it will also be necessary for your company to provide the city with sufficient assurances that your company will fully timely and appropriately perform all of its obligations under the contract into the future. Please be prepared to fully respond to this letter no later than a time for the aforementioned meeting on Tuesday morning. However, your company wishes to respond preliminarily before then, please do so by reply emails, my emails, which this letter is sent as an attachment and it's under my signature. Um, we had a meeting uh, with respect to this, this this morning, I think it was a very constructive meeting. Uh, the mayor was in the meeting, um, Mr. Gavin was in the meeting, uh, Ms. Hernandez was in the meeting, I was in the meeting. Uh, legal counsel for GFL was there, as was Mr. Cara Mango. Um, we made it very clear uh, that they're going to have to do uh, certain things, including uh, deductions being made uh, from the amounts that would be paid. But we're also insisting that they be prepared to deal with these things in the future, so we do not have a repeat. And Mr. Cara Mango and or other individuals on behalf of GFL are supposed to comment on that. And that was another thing that we insisted on and we appreciate the fact uh, that they are here. But of course, that was also something that we expected to be done, so. Uh, I have no further things to say at this point, I think it would be more helpful uh, to hear from GFL. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, thank you.
If you go ahead, um, Mr. Cara Mango.
Well, good evening, everybody, um, first, first of all, I'd like to apologize for our, our uh, our lack of service, lack of timely service in the last, especially the last three weeks. Uh, following the the Memorial Holiday, really, we hit the peak of the spring season with the with the volume increase and working that eight days of collection, so we fell behind. Uh, we had a hard time catching up. Um, there is, as we all probably are aware, there is a labor situation uh, in the metropolitan Detroit area as well as nationally in the rubbish business uh, attracting and and staffing uh, properly for these residential jobs. Uh, we are doing all that we can, uh, we have increased our wages again, uh, as we did last year. Uh, we are recruiting and hiring and training as fast as we can to bring this schedule back into a uh, an acceptable level. Uh, we have worked the last couple of Saturdays to catch up and clean up what was left behind for the week. And I'm glad to say we did finish yesterday and we did finish on schedule again today. Um, we uh, we had, as Gary mentioned, we had a a meeting this morning, talked about a variety of things, most importantly, I think, is getting your schedule back on track. Uh, we've utilized staff from our, some of our other locations in the metro Detroit area to bring in uh, roaming support to make sure we've got the trucks where they need to be to get this job done. Um. It's it's not an easy job, but we are contracted to do so, so we're making every and all arrangements that we can to make sure this thing is going uh, uh, going proper going forward. Uh, we do service two hundred eighty-five thousand homes a month here for yard waste, recycle, and trash. Um, but we do that all the time. It's just a, the the peak of the season with this staffing shortfall right now is is providing its challenge for us.
If I may, I would note that we had some specific discussions uh, with respect to an additional uh, manager being assigned, is that correct?
Yes, sir, we we have a, we have a additional manager on the morning with the route manager uh, that deals with Lee directly. And you've got the operations team support as well, uh, as well as reaching out to me if if needed to uh, to uh, reinforce our staff, but yes, we have an additional route supervisor on the street right now to be able to respond and react to uh, service issues, yes, sir.
And we are looking at some additional educational and outreach uh, activities as well, as I understand it, correct?
Yes, exactly, we're going to work with the city of Dearborn Heights as well as the cable department to put some educational pieces on the uh, on the website and do an educational video. We're also gonna clean up some of the, some of the uh, website information that you have on your website uh, that that's outdated, so I've already got someone looking at that, pulling the resources together to get you current and most up-to-date information, yes, sir.
Yes, and Mr. Fish, your legal counsel and I will be discussing further the penalties that will need to end up being dealt with. But we figured it was most important to talk about some of these other things that, at this juncture, uh, to make sure that uh, you know, we get this matter addressed as 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 quickly as we can, and I I think that is the best way to sum it up, and I, you would agree with me, I would assume, Mr. Cara Mango?
Yes, I agree with you, that's exactly what we talked about today, among other things, uh, getting this service on track and then settling up on our on our uh, our our fines for not not performing well. Um. Again, we're, we are up to speed as of right now and I expect that uh, we finish this this job daily, every day going forward through the end of this weekend and beyond.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I have Councilman Abdullah, did you have one question for them, or are you just getting on the list?
Yes, no, I I I do have a question for them, so when we first had the presentation from GFL way back when, honestly, it was a great presentation and everything seemed good, we even had the owner of the company coming in and speak to us. Everything was excellent, you guys had an excellent person, God rest his soul, unfortunately passed away because of COVID. Tony was excellent with customer service, unfortunately, lately, it's not been as good. And I'm being very blunt and very honest, I've made calls, I'm not gonna name the person, but you know who they are, and I've spoken with DPW about them. I've made calls about residents that had concerns about their garbage not being picked up. The gentleman went out of his way to prove that the residents are wrong, instead of just sending somebody over there, picking it up, it's a little bit off the curb, pick it up, move on, terrible customer service, it was a councilman calling them and I'll only call it once every month, month and a half, when I have it, when somebody has a problem. It was terrible customer service, in addition to that, Memorial Day weekend, with all due respect, that's not an excuse because Memorial Day weekend's been around every single year, for years and years and years. As far as employment, pay people more money, you can bring more people in. And lastly, there's, at least I haven't seen it, the same problem with waste management. I hate to be so harsh, I hate to be so blunt, but I'm just being blunt, this is my current feelings, it's not the same touchy-feely feelings that I had when you guys first started, and I hope customer service gets better. In addition to that, I would ask that our administration, I hate to, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but maybe on a thirty-day probationary period to reassess if their customer service has gotten better, because right now there's a lot of residents are not happy, which makes me not happy and administration not happy, thank you.
Mr. Abdullah, uh, this is Sam again, the 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 manager you were speaking of, uh, was Rob and he's no longer a manager for GFL, we've made adjustments there, recognized that problem and removed him from being a manager for waste management.
Okay, I didn't want to name him, excellent move, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Abdul Hawk.
Madam Chair.
You have three minutes.
No, you go ahead, I uh, I yield my time.
Okay, next, we have the mayor, and again, it's three-minute limit for everybody tonight.
Thank you, Council Chair, so Council, Councilman Conston brought up the issue about speeders. Uh, so I I just want to address his question first, uh, and for also fireworks. So we met with, uh, I met with the chief, both Chief Myers and Chief Brogan, we actually did an inform- information informative uh, uh, session on cable uh, for all the residents of our speeders down Ford Road, I know the the police department is out in force. And uh, they've actually, uh, I'm sure that Chief, uh, Chief Myers will speak to uh, to that that portion, that they've been doing uh, a lot of patrols, especially on Ford Road where there's an issue. And the fireworks was another discussion that we had with Chief Brogan, we also had uh, a show on that one at the fire department to discuss the safety of fireworks and also effects on residents. Um, uh, I just want to also uh, commend my staff, you know, with the issue that we're talking about with uh, with the garbage, you know, with GFL. Uh, I know Mr. Miyake, uh, uh, Chief, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a retired chief, but Mr. Lee Gavin and the Chief of Staff, you know, Stephanie in our office, and the DPW for working uh, around the clock, you know, answering phone calls, it was very stressful, you know, they uh, uh, the phones were booked and they were stopping at the city hall, they were lined up, you know, just you know, just with complaints about the the trash not being picked up, so I commend all of them, you know, for uh, um, doing excellent ser-, you know, customer service, answering residents' concerns. And uh, I appreciate the meeting with GFL uh, this morning and it's, it, you know, it looks very positive, so I hope we can turn that around, you know, so we can uh, just move move past it and just go forward. I always say propel forward. Um, I have a letter here from Chief Brogan. They uh, they honored uh, or gave letter rec- uh, recognition to firefighter Chapman. He was one of uh, several uh, actually working with the seven communities during the vaccination COVID at the Ford Performing Arts Building in Dearborn. Uh, there were seventeen members and he actually had the highest uh, total hours at the vaccine site. He had total of a hundred seventy hours uh, at the vaccine site. Uh, there were seventeen members and he actually had the highest total hours at the vaccine site. He had total of one hundred seventy hours at the vaccine site. Uh, he estimated giving a hun, uh, one thousand two hundred vaccines. And I actually watched them in action during the first stage, you know, at the beginning of COVID. Uh, I was down there with several firefighters and one of the volunteers actually passed, passed out, you know, right behind me. And he was one of the three, uh, four firefighters that jumped, you know, for her aid and to one of the teenage volunteers. So I was like very, very impressed with the service, the way he actually jumped for, to make sure that she was okay. And actually, he's also, don't ever challenge him to golf. He's a great golfer.
Thank you. Next I have Chief of Staff.
Thank you. Uh, since we were on the GFL topic, I do want to add two things that, uh, Mr. Miyaki and the mayor may have forgotten. But we did establish a new tracking system that we will have for all of the missed trash that we have, which will give us a more accurate number of how GFL is doing and will help us keep them accountable moving forward. Um, I would also like to mention that we ourselves are having an issue with staffing at the city. Uh, Elizabeth, I'm sorry if you were going to mention this, but we do have a job fair coming up on Saturday, June twenty sixth. So if you know anyone that's, uh, looking for a job, please have them come out to the library right next to city hall. We are again looking for various positions at various different levels. And, uh, we believe that if they come and talk to us, it will be better for them to understand what type of jobs, uh, we're looking for. I would also like to encourage all city council members and all the residents to please spread the word that we are currently looking for more volunteers for our FEMA. Uh, grant application. So again, this is the hazard mitigation. With FEMA, we are applying for a new one. The deadline is at the end of the month. And we want volunteers just to make sure that when we are putting into the application, we can show FEMA that there are interested resident, interested residents in selling their homes. Uh, so please spread the word and have them fill out the volunteer form and send it back to, um, the mayor's office or email it to me. Uh, with regards to the tablets for the ordinance apartment, uh, again, we were short staffed this week, but we have been promised tomorrow they're coming back. So those will be set up by the end of the week. So hopefully that will relieve a little bit of the issues that we've been seeing in ordinance. And that's about it for me tonight. Uh, have a great night, everybody. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Um, next, I will go next. Um, just a reminder to everybody, council cutoff for the agenda is twelve noon Tuesday before the actual council meeting. If you need to add something after this time, call. That's the procedure. You are to call me the council chair. You don't go to the clerk's office. You don't go to the secretaries there. They do not have authorization. I'm the only one that can add it. If you need something, call me and I'm pretty reasonable after the deadline. If I don't get a call, I can't add it on. Also too, great news, our city council meetings will be in person and in council chambers, beginning with a study session we have already scheduled. For July sixth for Act Seventy Eight. I'm excited to get back in person and I know a lot of the residents are too. Next I have Nanam Clerk. Go ahead, please.
I'll make this real quick. Everyone should know that there's a election coming up Tuesday, August third. It's a local city election. And our, our initial bulk mailing for the absentee ballots will, the ballots will be delivered to the post office this Thursday, June twenty fourth. If you come to city hall now, you'll see that we have two voting booths up as ballots are available here. Uh, applications for absentee ballots are available as well at city hall or at the city clerk's office or on our city's election webpage. Uh, for returning them, any of the ballots or the applications to, um, get processed ballot boxes are here at city hall as well as at the JFK library and they're both open. Um, you can also put thus, you know, the applications or ballots in them, in the mail or deliver at the city clerk's office here. Um, and just a reminder that, um, or you may not know, during each, every, each and every election cycle, the clerk's office receives numerous calls about political sign placements and where the signs can be displayed. Um, I did speak with the ordinance director today and, um, I just want everyone to know that if you have any issues with that, to please call the ordinance department. As they're the ones that will address that issue. Seven nine one three four nine seven. Thank you.
Council Chair, you made an error.
What did I do?
About our study session we did, uh, August thirty first, we voted on, we would not go back to live meetings till August thirty first.
That doesn't apply to city council chambers or the judges' chambers. We're a different jurisdiction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Chief Myers.
You did.
We're trying to find him.
Council Chair, thank you. Um, real quick, I'm going to touch on a couple of things. First, uh, I know, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Abdo Hawk asked about the cadet program at the police department. For a change, I get to one up the, uh, fire department because we've had something in place for quite some time. We do a cooperative, uh, agreement with Westwood Schools who actually has a criminal justice program, uh, through, uh, Westwood Schools, Crestwood and District Seven. Um, we have them come in. Those kids are able to use our facilities. They get tours. They also do ride alongs to help develop their criminal justice interest. And then we also have a cadet jailer program at our police department for people eighteen and over that can be employed and experience law enforcement, see how Dearborn Heights works. And we can encourage them through that process to, to seek, uh, employment in our criminal justice. So it's kind of a, an informal but formal development of young adults to enter the criminal justice profession. So we are doing it like FD. Um, we don't have it in conjunction with the university, but, uh, we do have a program in place. So I hope people will take advantage of that. Uh, secondly, to reply to what, um, the mayor had said, uh, traffic, uh, we are addressing it. You've seen the videos. Uh, we've had, increased our patrols on the weekends. We have undercover vehicles spotting for drag racing. Uh, more vehicles were seized this weekend for drag racing. Um, tomorrow or in two days, uh, we'll be attending a, uh, aggressive driving summit. With Detroit Police, Redford Police, a bunch of neighboring jurisdictions that we're coming up with solutions to the problems that we're facing. Um, at any given time, a council person could, uh, contact me. It might take me about twenty four hours. But I can give you the stats of how many violations we're writing, what they're for and in what locations, really within the matter of, uh, you know, an hour, I can get that data for you. Uh, to pass on to your constituents if you, you know, so you can use as explanation of what the police are doing. Uh, so we don't have to keep repeating this at the council meetings over and over because that, and we are doing what we need to do. What we don't have is cooperation from the drivers who are not behaving properly on the roadways. Um, fireworks. Uh, we're keeping logs right now. We keep logs of every firework complaint we get, whether or not that that has a complainant or if they want to be anonymous. And the violations, if we're issuing them, I've always said we need a complainant to be able to enforce these violations. But we'll have that data available for you as well, um, after, uh, the, after the, the holiday. So I can provide that if anybody's, uh, concerned. And then finally, um, as you know, uh, you're always welcome. I can get you the data. I'll answer any questions. Um, about purchases, about, uh, any of those emails, great, but please feel free to contact me. You know, I'll be responsive to you and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have Hassan Jamal.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, you know, I am gonna ask the Assistant of Corporation Counsel for procedure. I, I would like to bring mine eye back. I was cut off. Uh, it's regulatory issue. I don't want the council to end up in some kind of a legal situation with the Act Three Forty Five board. I'm requesting a, uh, a legal advice opinion from the corporation council to, to bring back mine eye. And to read before the meeting adjourned. And I encourage you to vote on this one because it's correct.
We did.
It's clear. We did.
Yeah, we voted.
We voted on it.
It approved?
Yes.
This is nine I.
Was tabled.
Yes.
Yes. We did, we did bring it back. We voted on it. It was approved.
Thank you very much. I was, I wasn't up there and I did communicate with, uh, the treasurer and she said, uh, it wasn't.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Nine I, we send it back to the administration to correct the numbers.
The numbers.
The numbers. I will, I will correct the number right now. I need the interference of the corporation council. Please put it back.
Mister Jamal, there is more to it than just the numbers.
No, no, there's no more to it, Mr.
Okay, point of order, guys. At this point, corporate counsel gave us a suggestion and we followed his suggestion.
Absolutely.
On how to handle it.
Need to be bring back right now and discuss it and bring it and approve it.
I'm sorry, but we are following Corporation Counsel's recommendation. He's our legal advisor.
Go ahead. I was glad that I made sure the corporation council a long time ago attend every council meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Miyaki.
We're not going to open this back up again, are we?
Um, I'm kind of confused as to what I'm supposed to be doing. I believe I ended up recommending that it be referred back. Uh, so that the numbers could end up being, uh, correct.
I have the number, I have number, the number is, the number is already on the agenda. It just, you know, uh, uh, read, read the corrected statement.
Madam Chair.
But my, my recommendation.
He's out of order.
Yeah, my recommendation would not change. Thank you.
Clerk, please mute people. The three minutes are up. Okay, at this time we are calling, um, Librarian McCaffrey. Find him to unmute him. There he is. Go ahead.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that most of our hours are at pre pandemic level at Carolyn Kennedy Library. We will be open ten AM to nine PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday, ten AM to five PM and Saturday, twelve to five. Uh, at John F. Kennedy Junior Library, we will be open twelve PM to eight PM, Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, twelve to five. Also wanted to remind residents that if you're hesitant to leave your house for pickup, our delivery service is up and running. If you have a hold, you can call us at three one three seven nine one thirty eight hundred at Carolyn Kennedy Library. Or three one three seven nine one six zero five zero at John F. Kennedy Junior Library and we will bring it to you. You can also call us and we will put an item on hold for you. Uh, I wanted to thank all council members and officials for coming out last Saturday to our summer event drive through at JFK Library, gave out over two hundred fifty bags to happy residents. Um, and a continuation of that will be going on this Saturday, June twenty sixth, from one to four PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library. I will, we will be kicking off our family summer activity program with a grab and go drive through. Uh, we will be giving away books, craft supplies, small hoop boxes, glow sticks, tattoos and much more. Uh, other departments, including police, fire, administration officials and treasurer will be there as well. Uh, should be a blast. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you. Next we have, um, Director Sabota Perry.
I thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the job fair is on Saturday, the twenty sixth from ten AM until noon at the Carolyn Kennedy Library. It is a good opportunity for anyone that's seeking a job or seeking a career change. What we currently have positions for ordinance, animal control, dispatch, police officer, multiple positions within the Department of Public Works. Also the fire, for firefighters entry level and an office manager position for the building department. So please join us and I too will see you at the library.
All right. Next we have, um, Treasurer Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, hey, everyone. I, for twenty twenty and have gone to the printer. They will be mailed out on July the first. So they should be arriving in your homes the first week in July. And of course, that's pending United States Postal Service and their delivery schedule. But we have everything ready to go for you on July first. The, um, payment without penalty is going to be Monday, August the sixteenth, five PM. And thank you to the Honorable City Council who are approving that resolution to extend that item. The other thing I wanted to share with you, uh, just briefly is nine I, I just want to remind council and respectfully ask for your consideration, Madam Chair and Council, to have a special meeting on that item because that Act Three Forty Five money are the millages, the millage money that was collected in the current fiscal year. And should be paid to Act Three Forty Five before the end of the current fiscal year of June thirtieth. So again, that is money the general fund owes to Act Three Forty Five. So I do ask for consideration that, on that item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have, um, Director Constan.
Hi, um, I'd like to remind everybody, you've probably seen the notices around for our first concert in the park. Um, we've got fifty amp views at the Warren Valley Golf Course. Um, we're going to have food trucks for you, um, to choose anything that, uh, you would like to eat at. Or eat. And then we have kids games for free. We also have a magician that will be strolling around with, um, uh, face painters there. Uh, it's going to be a great time and, um, it runs from five thirty to nine. Everybody is welcome. If you've seen our flyers around, you'll notice that we are using QR codes now. Um, I believe that we're the first department in the city using QR codes. So, um, you can just use your phone and it comes up the, the whole schedule for the evening. So hope to see you guys there and it's going to be a blast.
What's the date?
The date is July first and, um, you can dance the night away and, uh, Warren Valley is going to have their beverage, um, area open if you, uh, wish to have a beverage, which will be separate from the family area. So it'll be a nice evening. We're all looking forward to it.
Thank you. Next I have, um, Corporate Counsel Miyaki.
Uh, I have nothing to add. I'm sorry, uh, Council Chair. Thank you.
No problem. Next I have, um, Nancy Brier and I wanted to let you know, I know you're new. But once you raise your hand once, I put you on a list. It's not necessary to raise it several times.
Okay, am I here now?
Yes, you are.
All right. It lies the fact that we're this late. Uh, if Sam is still there, I do have a GFL comment. I would recommend that, uh, we send something out either through GFL or the city to let people know what the rules and regulations are for the placement of the cans. I have a neighbor in particular that's been waiting for a month to have a broken wheel can that I've pulled up on the easement and backed down that was supposed to be picked up for the last month. Uh, I'm getting tired of looking at that broken can. So if that could be considered and possibly some knowledge to all the residents as to using the easement or the driveway rather than the sidewalk or the street. So that cars shouldn't be parked there either. So we have to follow up on this ordinance item. And then to quickly announce that I do have a South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting on Thursday, the twenty fourth, seven to nine PM, three three, three five, South Beach Daily. Our speakers are our own city clerk who will again tell us about absentee ballots and the rules and regs for voting. And we also have Carrie Hatton, Corporal Carrie Hatton, who will alert us to all the scams that are going on now and what is happening in our, our city police department. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Dib.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. This is again for GFL. Um, just like to ma, make one comment, you know, I'm the acting director, uh, currently in the interim, uh, for the DPS, uh, DPW and, and I have an issue with GFL not answering their phones. So, uh, I rate citizens as a result, end up calling, uh, my staff. So could you please, we have the phone advertised on our website. So for GFL to assign someone to just answer their phones. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to that, sir?
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm still here. Um, for, as far as the card exchange goes, do you have the address? I'll take that right now if you do.
Do I have what? I'm sorry.
Oh, Nancy, do you have the car exchange?
Car exchange?
Car.
Oh, I have an address. It is at, is at two five four or two five three three five Colgate. And the gentleman has called people repeatedly and, uh, I'm now pleading in his case.
Two five three three five Colgate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll get that, I'll get someone on that first thing tomorrow morning.
I thank you. I'll even be happy if you do it by Friday.
Mr. Dib, the, the, the phone answering at the customer service center, I'll take that up with them first thing in the morning as well tomorrow. Thank you.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Next I have Leslie Winless. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Leslie Winless. I reside at two three four six nine Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, forty one two five. I just wanted to thank everybody that made time to come out to the Juneteenth event that we had this past Saturday. We really felt the community's support and wanted to send a thank you to everybody. And then I wanted to clarify two things because at the last meeting, when we came and talked, we got fundraising advice from Councilman Abdul of Hawk, but we weren't asking about that. We don't have any issues with fundraising or getting money from the community or from ourselves. We all have a wide network of people to fundraise from. The issue was related to us being told about a policy that didn't exist in the middle of our meeting. Then today we came and we spoke, and our concern was about another situation where misinformation was given at our meeting by Treasurer Hicks Clayton. And then we're getting, I think it was Mariana and then as well as Mr. Jamal, who spoke about the need for these policies so that everybody can be on the same page. To make it clear, we are not opposed to following any policies, which is why we handed over all of the money that we had immediately and began to follow the, the policy. The issue is the way that it was brought to the commission in a public meeting and the way it was made it to seem like we were trying to steal money or that we were mishandling the money when the truth is there was no policy in place and nobody from any part of the city informed us of these policies that were just made and approved tonight. So I just wanted to clarify what our issues are because you guys are responding and it's not addressing them at all. Thank you, and I will yield the rest of my time. I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you. Next we have Moby June. You're speaking as a resident.
Yes, Madam Chair. I live, I reside at six zero one three Amboy Street. You know, I've actually, a resident reached out to me. Her son has a, you know, he has a, I'm just going to look at a food allergy. And she reached out and asked me to reach out to our director, Mrs. Constan, to see if we can get signage at the local parks, talking about food allergies, peanuts, eggs, soy, wipe your hands. There's a sign that I guess that are going from park to park. They're doing it, I believe, in Livonia. I believe Northville, she told me, and she's requesting that Dearborn Heights has the sign put up at the local parks. Maybe I can connect with Mrs. Constan tomorrow to kind of go over that.
She's available right now. Go ahead, please.
Um, I will definitely look into that.
Thank you so much. And, and I, I'm just speaking on, I told her that I would bring it up. I forgot to bring it up while we spoke, so I'm just bringing it up. And maybe tomorrow means you can follow up. I'll show, I can send you some pictures of what she sent to me, her.
That would be great because I've actually not heard of that before, so.
Yeah, so I believe her son has a, a bad food allergy, allergy, and she was, you know, at the park. She was very concerned. She tends to drive them out to Northville. I told her I'll be in contact with the director, maybe see what we can do to help you guys out.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds good.
Thank you so much, Director, for all that you're doing, and great job.
Thanks.
Next we have Resident Vince Strukowski.
Go, Vince.
Good evening, everybody, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My standing is for Mr. Carol Mango. Sir, I've observed your trucks several times going down the street with the front-end loading unit, and they raise it up and dump their load into the, the container. A lot of times, a lot of trash comes right off the sides. There's no side plate to catch the trash. There's no whisker unit. And your trucks technically are very mismaintained. You can tell by how filthy they are. So I don't know how you can even inspect your bearings or any of your equipment. So, but if you could get some side plates for those dumpsters or the, the raising units so that they're not dumping trash into the streets where I have to go and pick up because you don't have a sweeping truck that comes after and sweep up any of the mess. The city's still trying to get its schedule straightened out, but that's, that's another issue. That's one thing I want to say, and I thank you for your attention on that. And the other thing is to the city council, this meeting is way past what should be done, and it's high time that you have more study sessions to get some of your questions and issues resolved, and so you're not wasting a bunch of council time and the residents' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any further comments? Okay, at this time, do I have a, hear a motion?
During the meeting?
Excuse me. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bedu.
I adjourn, I moved the motion to adjourn the meeting. For?
Before by Councilman Moskett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and have a good night.
Everybody have a good night.